Okay, I'm trying to see if we've got everybody here. Let's see, there's Josh. There's Gary, the man in the white hat. It's always a good time. Chad, the man who probably should wear a hat. And then are we missing Linda? Am I just not seeing Linda?
I deserve. She's there.
All right, hang on.
She's waving at you.
Okay, let me just get my view in here. Let me go to gallery view. Now that's better. Now I can see everybody. There's Linda. Excellent. All right, let me get my agenda. I mean, my tome. All right, so let's see, will you call the role? Well, we'll just note that everybody is here, right? We'll go into the work session. I don't think we have anybody to interview. Is that correct, Leslie? No, all right. I thought what we do, since we're going to go over board and applications in the regular meeting, is that I think the next thing we should do, I know there's some pertinent issues on executive session that we probably should go ahead and move into executive session. Because I'm sure a lot of you have some questions about some of these things, and that may take some time. So if it's okay with everybody, I want to get us into executive session. They got an issue with that. Yep, all right, so we're going to go into executive session pursuant sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. Leslie, do you want to set up our executive session? And for the rest of you, Kenneth, Julie, Jason, Irene, Rebecca, Crystal, all these people that Andrew, James, we'll be back to you soon. Joshua, we'll be back to you soon too. Tabitha, we'll be back to you soon, soon. Get everybody, maybe feeling left out. Larry, we won't be back to you.
I assume Melissa needs to stay in, correct?
Yes, Melissa needs to stay.
Well, there's a lot of young people on this one, but of course, I'm at that age where George looks like a young person to me. Gary looks like a young whippersnapper. That's what happens when you turn 59. And yeah, I know you've got a beard, Gary. Don't show off your beard. I can't grow a beard like that.
No, I was talking about, I have to dye this gray to make me look old.
You know, I told, I told a student that one time. I go, I said, I'm 35, I dye my hair gray. And he goes, what'd you do? Chain smoke your whole life? And I go, man, that's brutal. Okay, so is that everybody?
Looks like it.
Yeah, okay. All right, I gotta change my reading glasses.
We're still recording.
And now I'm gonna let everybody back in.
Floodgates open. But we didn't have Lakita in there. I mean, we only had Lakita in there. You know, she brightens up today. Not Larry. Larry's always the downer on our, on our infrastructure. No offense, Larry. Bless your heart, as we say in Texas. All right, is that everybody?
I believe so.
Okay, so we're going to move into the work session. I'm just going to ask the council, because like I said, we'll go through the board appointments in the regular meeting. Is there anything else on the regular session that you want to talk about before we move into regular session? I see no from Linda, no from Chad.
No, no, sir. No, sir.
All right, thank you. See, now, let's all just take a few moments lessons that how polite Gary is to his manner, and we should all.
I'm new. I'm new. I haven't got to that point yet.
Okay. All right, so then we'll move into regular session. Make note that everybody here that was for the work session is here for the regular session. We're going to go to the citizen FISM forum for anybody who wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda. Joe, are you asking to speak about something that's not on the agenda? Otherwise, I'll call you when we get to the agenda item. Or is this just something that's not on the agenda item?
Not on.
Okay, so when, when we, when we get to it, just raise your hand and I'll call on you, okay?
I'm wishing to speak during public forum on things not on the agenda, sir.
Oh, or not on the agenda. Okay, okay. So then I'm going to call on you to speak. So just give your name and address. You know the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Joe Palmer, representing the Kennedale Alliance of Business Owners, 4017 Sanguine Court, Fort Worth, Texas. Thank you for including in the agenda under call to order, the council intends to conduct meetings in accordance with state law, specifically 551.001 of the local government code, which states that government body, government body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address body regarding an item on the agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. And relating to this, I do seek recognition and intend to speak on items F1 and F2. Separately, staff, rather than simply providing basic documents like simple campaign finance reports of candidates, is seeking opinions of the AG on whether or not they should provide those documents to people. I know this has happened to me. I know this has happened to at least one other person. Staff is unnecessarily incurring legal fees, and those fees are costing the taxpayers of Kennedale many thousands of dollars. Sandra Lee mentioned this while she was still on council. We're asking city council to rein in staff and make a recommendation or instruct staffs to stop going to the Attorney General and spending thousands of dollars of taxpayer money on things that they know they just need to provide. These are basic documents. Also, based on what I understand from councils past, my understanding is that Friday evening is the soonest that council members are provided with agenda packets. This gives council members two business days to understand the information sufficiently in order to vote. Council is voting on very complex issues, issues that stand to impact residents of Kennedale and business owners of Kennedale for generations to come, weighing thousands of dollars. So let's try to get packets to council members before Friday, before the meeting the following week. I have a feeling that there are questions that are yet to be answered on a lot of things. Also, I would like for staff, I'd like for city council to instruct staff to upload meetings, videos sooner than 13 days following those meetings for the benefit of the constituents. The Texas Legislature uploads videos in a matter of hours after those committee meetings are over for those floor sessions. And finally, when are we going to meet in person? Tarrant County's been meeting in person for months and months. City of Fort Worth has been meeting for months and months. You've spent $65,000 or $75,000 on audio video equipment. People want to engage their city government. People want to talk to you up close before and after the meetings. They want to engage you, and they want to understand why you're doing some of the things you're doing. That's all. Thank you.
All right, before you leave, Joe, can you re, just give me one more, I got my pin here, I want to mark down when you want to speak. What was the items again?
Sure, thank you. F1, F2, those are the two properties, 600 West Kennedale, 6820 Crest Drive.
All right. Now, do we have anybody else wishing to speak? No, then I will close the citizens forum, and then we'll go to updates from the city council. Gary?
Again, I would just like to thank staff for preparing this, especially, I think it was Leslie sent me the podcast or the Zoom, all the applicants for the boards, and that was very helpful for me because I missed it, and that was awesome. I got to listen to that Saturday, and it helped me make up my mind on a couple of choices. So I just want to thank the staff for preparing this, and kind of like Joe said, it's pretty difficult for me to get my packet on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I do ministry, but that's my fault. So I actually have Monday, and I got to work, so I got a little time Monday and a little time Tuesday to read through a lot of stuff, and I'm kind of slow at reading. So anyway, I would like to see it, if that's possible at some point in time, that we could maybe get it two or three days earlier. Well, I think we used to get it like a week in advance, but that was back in the prehistoric times. But anyway, I just want to thank the staff for preparing something that makes my life a lot easier to make the best decisions that I can for the city. Thank you.
All right, Chad?
I am just thankful to be out of 2020. Not a lot to report on, you know, holiday season between last and this one. Got out there to a lot of community service over Christmas and New Year's. And I encourage everybody to keep that spirit of giving up, even though, you know, things may feel like they're, they're getting back to normal. There's a lot of people out there that their normal is horrible, so we can reach out and, and be a part of that in our community.
Thank you. Linda?
I have nothing to report this night. Thank you.
Josh?
Also, don't have anything to report.
All right, well, then that brings it to me. One of the things that we're working on, and I'm going to have Leslie reach out to you, I have, you know, you may have heard some complaints about the landfill. I don't know if you've heard those or not. I've asked the owners of landfill to set up a tour, and if you're interested in the tour, Leslie, just email Leslie and let her know. I've asked them to try to do it within the next couple of weeks to tour the landfill, because there's been some question about odor. And so if you're interested, let us know. It's an interesting tour. I've taken it once before, and so just to give you a heads up on that. Also, let's keep a heads up on coronavirus. Texas is now averaging 300 deaths a day. Tarrant County is now at record rates of infection. And until, I know, until we can get this a little bit under control and start getting our vaccines, I don't know how many people have been vaccinated. I know I haven't. You know, I still think that what we're doing here is far safer for some of us that may be older, me, Gary, George. No offense, Gary. So thank you for being willing to me, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to get together soon. All right, so that brings us up to updates from the city manager.
Mayor, I do not have any updates tonight.
And then that brings us to the updates from the city finance director.
Mayor, I do not have any particular highlights tonight from the financials. I'm available for questions.
Any questions from Lakita and the financial report that you got? Now, seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. These items have been appeared of previous agendas require little, no, little deliberation, considered routine, they're ministerial. Does anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda before we move forward?
No.
I don't think it needs to be removed necessarily, but on the staff report for the resolution to call the election, staff has requested input from council as to if we should have a special meeting to canvass the election or to do it with, move the regular meeting at a different date. My opinion is a special meeting, so I don't know if you want to talk about that now or, or later.
Well, we can ask Drew. Drew, is that a decision we need to make now?
No.
Okay.
All right, so we can come back to that. So if I'm not hearing anything to remove off the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, motion by Councilman Mitchell. Do I have a second? Second by Mayor Pro Tim Chad Wondell. Would you please call the role, Leslie?
Josh Altam.
Yeah.
Gary Mitchell.
Yeah.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Wondell.
Affirmative.
There we go, and motion passed unanimously. All right, items for individual consideration. Number one, consider approval of performance agreement on contract sale related to the property of 600 West Kennedale Parkway and otherwise city manager to execute agreements. Just in case, for those of the public who are wishing to speak on it, I'm going to allow staff to do presentation first. So in case that might raise another question for you, or may answer a question for you, and then after I get the staff report, then I'll go to allowing citizens to ask questions. All right, so let's start off with the staff.
Thank you. This is a site owned by the EDC. It's one of several sites that we've been working with the EDC board to put the site to use, to develop the site. This is a unique property that was created from the realignment of Bowman Springs several years ago. And it is unique in that it's a very sort of long, any lot that's less than 100, 100 feet deep. And so therefore is a bit of a challenge to do sort of traditional commercial development. You may recall that y'all have previously zoned this urban village. We talked about the idea that area being in the comprehensive plan as urban village, but also the opportunity that exists three and two other properties on that intersection, which are vacant to develop as a mixed use, and perhaps have this property serve as a catalyst to attract retail development on the other two corners and adjacent vacant lots. We've been working with this developer, GBOH Inc., now for a number of months for redevelopment of the property to 16 homes. These would be single-family homes owned by the same owner and leased out. These would be nice homes. The, when we get to the, actually, the, if you would like, the developer is here and can present those plans for you. We talked about it a little bit in the zoning case, but like I said, if you would like to, he can present that. The, the development would include also a small pocket park. We've worked with them to have a site plan that would minimize sort of concrete, have grass in the front. These are two-story homes. So the agreement that you have before you would, would include the sale of the property from the EDC to the developer in a nutshell for $5,000. The developer would purchase the property from the EDC for the tad valuation, which is about 116,000, 116,915. Once the slabs are built, the EDC would then reimburse all but $5,000 of that to the developer. The development would be completed in April of 2022. They would invest a minimum of $3.2 million. Where estimate, the estimation of valuation once complete is approximately 4.8 million. So the goal, one of the goals is to put the property back on the tax rolls, which of course this would do. It is not on the tax rolls now because it's owned by the EDC, and to also serve as a catalyst for development in the area. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And like I said, if you'd like to see those rent images again, the developer is here and can show those.
And we'll point out, Melissa, that it would, it would generate around 39,000 a year for property taxes, which would repay the 160 within about three years. And before I bring on the public, I'd like to hear from the developer too, so that we know what his plans are, if he's around here.
Good evening. Joel Beal here, sound check. Am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. With your permission, I'll share my screen so you can see what I'm looking at here. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Perfect. I'll, again, my name is Joel, and I'm glad to answer, you know, any questions anyone might have here. Starting big and working small. This is the current site plan. North Bowman Springs Road on the top, of course, West Kennedale Parkway to the left. In front of the houses is grass and grass and, and a sidewalk. Off over to the right is our pocket park, children's play area. And then in the back is, is our vehicle parking and our garage area. So there will be green space on the left, the front, and on the right. And then all the vehicles will be kept in the back. And there's a retaining wall in the back, which was brought up at the last meeting. And actually, there's a natural grade of about eight foot here, so the retaining wall, as far as keeping sound from the adjacent business, will be quite effective. Trees will be kept. In fact, we've moved this plan around a little bit to keep, keep the trees in place, keep as much green as possible. So there's the site plan, and then let me get over here.
Can we back up to the site plan? There's one thing I think it's important to mention. We've discussed, y'all might have recall seeing a site plan that had basically a drive in the front. And, you know, we really didn't want that. We wanted to have green space in the front. And so one of the things we did, sorry, it's kind of moving around. One of the things we did is looked at a one-way. Actually, I thought it was one-way. You guys are showing it as a two-way, but it goes to be a one-way coming off of Bowman Springs and then heading out, so that you can see there on the left-hand side that it's an exit only to the, to the parkway. So we'll need to work with Tech Dot to get that. We think we, we think just logically that we can. We understand the challenge of that being an entrance, but hopefully the exit will be okay. So I just wanted to point out that changed since the last time we've seen it. Those were moved up with green space in the front and just the lane and driveline in the rear.
Okay, and, and to clarify, Melissa, the intent is to keep this two-way, but there's ample, or to keep it one-way, but there's ample, ample room for two-way. And as long as the Kennedale Parkway remains exit-only, that, that should address any Tech Dot safety concerns. And if it doesn't, we'll change, but our preliminary information is they'll be satisfied with that. The, we call this the elevation view, the front view. There will be a variety of elevations interspersed, so it won't look like an apartment community. It'll look like what they are, which is real houses, real houses with real green space in front of them and no vehicles in the front. We have four different elevations with various materials here, stucco, brick, and siding give a kind of more of an urban feel. Also, low maintenance and highly attractive year after year without degrading in the Texas sun is kind of a big deal, both for maintenance and for appearance. So these are the four elevations. The two at the top are very similar with different materials, and then the two at the bottom have a little more of a hip roof, kind of more of a little modern design. They both have the kickouts here. And kind of the interesting thing, regardless of which elevation is on the front, the floor plan will remain the same. And what we have here is a two-car rear-loading garage in the back. And we have our, you know, big room downstairs with living, dining, and kitchen, half-bath and a big pantry. Two porches, one on the front facing the green space, and then one on the side facing the, the the lawn in between the units. And then as we move upstairs, which is this drawing on the right, master bedrooms over the garage, home office, which of course is kind of the thing these days, so we made what we believe is the best use of the space we have and put a home office in this fairly wide hallway here. And then two bedrooms up front with a bath right here in the hallway. So our intent is to go back here to the overview here. Our intent is to have a nice, family-friendly housing that's within the price range of people who work for a living. Maybe people who are not yet ready to buy or unable to buy, because housing prices in the metroplex are getting to astounding levels. So it'll be something that people can afford. And, and you know, we're really looking forward to this. These, these are going to be very nice houses. Really looking forward to getting started, right down the street from some of the development that's going on right now on Kennedale Parkway. So any questions on this?
Well, just hold off for a second. Let me open the public hearing, then we'll come back in case people have in the public hearing can have some questions. You can respond to those questions. Staff can respond to those questions, and then we can have the council respond or also ask questions. Okay? So I'm going to open the public hearing, and I think the only person I have so far to speak up is Joe Palmer. Is that correct, Leslie? Leslie?
I don't know of anyone else.
Okay, so, yeah, Joe, I'm, I'm going to give you some, wait, oh, Andrew, okay, I'll come back to Andrew. Joe, if you, if you've got a lot of questions, make sure we list them all off so that they can get them all answered for you, okay? So, Joe, you're on.
Appreciate that. Joe Palmer, Kennedale Alliance of Business Owners. Appreciate Mr. Beal coming on to answer some questions tonight. I couldn't help but notice that the, the big difference between the diagram tonight versus the diagram that was shown earlier at the other meeting was that the houses are pushed way forward. And I have to think that this is because the dimensions were miscalculated at the last meeting. That was a big goof. We all make mistakes. That's fine. I heard Melissa Daly, excuse me, I heard the city planner use the word hopefully. That's not exactly a word that you want to hear used by somebody who's, you know, in charge. I guess she's in charge of negotiating the $5,000. To my knowledge, city council wasn't involved in deciding on that amount. And, and on that subject, I don't know if, if any members of city council would have been so enthusiastic to vote for this thing if they had known at that time that the property was going to be sold to somebody for $5,000. I, as somebody who knows nothing about real estate, would love to purchase land for $5,000. I, I think there are quite a few developers out there who could buy property for cents on the dollar and, and make money at it. I do appreciate and I acknowledge the, the desire to increase the tax base. That's something that I'm completely in agreement with everybody here on, I believe. Increase the tax base, you reduce the burden on each individual homeowner. $4.8 million on the tax rolls. The, you've got more questions here. Questions were raised at the last meeting when this was first discussed. I just don't know about the $5,000. It's kind of what I'm getting at. Who negotiated that? Why is it five? Why is it not 30? Why not try to get a little bit more for the taxpayers of the city? And the reason I have this concern is we're not exactly flush with cash. Tech Dot is looking at one point being $1.9 billion in the hole. They're looking at raising the fuel tax. They're going to be raising fees on vehicles. Nobody knows how much it's going to cost to drive. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned before a couple of times the gestalt of the tax rate. When you raise your tax rate, you want us to look very closely at neighboring taxing entities that don't raise their tax rate so that we're not quite as frustrated with you. Well, you know, here's the opportunity. Is that my time?
No, no, somebody coming.
All right, just real quickly in conclusion. You know, let's look at it from the other way around. When we see tax increases coming, the legislature is going to raise our taxes. The big, bad, evil legislature, Mr. Mayor, they're going to raise our taxes, and we have to find a way to cut taxes around here. But part of that is being a responsible custodian of the taxpayers' money and the treasure here. The EDC doesn't have a good track record going back to its beginning. They've hemorrhaged millions of dollars. And now they're giving away property. $5,000 is giving away property. Let's not give away property. Let's just sell it. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so let's start off, Melissa, response?
I'm not sure what you want me to respond to. The, in terms of the site plan, the site plan conforms with the urban village standards. Of course, as we're working with developers, there are always multiple revisions to make it the best that we can. And in fact, I think at the last, at the zoning meeting that you guys held on this case, Chad brought up the fact that there was a driveway in front correctly, so that there, you know, we don't want just a sea of concrete. So this was, you know, that was an effort to make it really the best possible plan that it could be.
Right, and I, I'll think I'll, I'll tackle the tax issue. I mean, I'm just going to have a respectfully disagree with Mr. Palmer. I, I don't see the legislature raising taxes. I mean, especially on the gas tax. The tax, gas tax has been raised since 1991, adjusted for inflation. It's gone from 18 cents to about seven cents. And they've changed the rules in the Texas Senate, Dan Patrick has, to make it even difficult. I think that's, that's going to be a problem. I think if anything, we're going to see the legislature cutting, spinning some more, from what I've been told of legislators. But hey, I'm only prognosticating, and could I be absolutely wrong? Yes, would it be the first time? No. So that's, it's, it's, it's an interesting point to make, and you're right. I do look at the gestalt of all of that tax base. Does the developer have anything left to say?
I'm good. I'll certainly answer any questions.
Mayor, did you have another request to speak?
Do I have what?
But that, no.
I have one on a pocket neighborhood. I, I have one on a pocket neighborhood. And I thought that was Andrew and I didn't think that was the same neighborhood. I don't see this as a pocket neighborhood.
I think regarding the pocket park.
It's the park in this neighborhood.
Oh, you want to talk about the park in this neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead, Andrew.
Uh, so I noticed that, that, um, this, this neighborhood had the drawing for the pocket park. And I, I think that's a great idea to kind of include some of that. Something else in conjunction with, with the, the whole development. And over on Bowman Springs, there is quite a few developments that don't have access to any sort of a park. And so I was wondering if there'd be any way that we can kind of consider, instead of it make being just a pocket park that might just be eligible or, you know, for the residents of that new community to kind of make it a little more inclusive for the, the communities that are on Bowman Springs.
And just, uh, I think Joel can speak to that, but just the reason that it's called a pocket park is because it's small. It's not, it's not really about accessibility, but Joel, do you want to speak to whether this will be open to the public? Is he still here?
He's still here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had my mic on mute. I apologize. I, uh, sorry. Yes, this is something the city has been adamant about from day one is that we create a park. We call it Pocket Park because of the size. It's open to the public. It's available for everyone. And, uh, the idea here is to do two things, have an area for the pets to roam, like the dogs. And then, um, you know, instead of just having art for the sake of art or a playground, just for the sake of a playground, uh, to have these really cool, and there are several vendors that make these really cool artsy, welcome to Kennedale looking kind of pieces that are actually made for kids to play on. So it's a combination playground, um, uh, playground, dog park, just kind of a hanging out place. And it will not be fenced off and it will be open to the public.
And, and I'll, I'll touch a little bit too, Andrew. Uh, part of the reason that when we, uh, rezone the property, I believe you live across from the Southwest Nature Preserve. Is that correct?
I do. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Uh, there is a, a large section of that, that has been, uh, banked for park land. Uh, it's just a matter of being able to start to develop that, that park behind the property in which you live as part of the linear park. Since they couldn't use it because it was in a floodway, so it became parkland. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. It does. Thank you.
All right. Well, then I'm, I had, I didn't do this. So I'm closing the public hearing now doing this. And now I'm going to go to the, the council. Does the council have any staff for the developer or the planner? Chad?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. So I, I know the developer agreement on this is rather specific saying 16 lots. So I'm just curious that if Tech Dot came back and said, sorry, you're not getting that exit on Kennedale Parkway, what's, what's plan B? Do you have to put in a hammerhead there or are we looking at, uh, a cul-de-sac? Are you going to lose a lot? Are you thinking it's going to completely change the layout design? I mean, does this even stay feasible at that point? Losing a lot? Just curious on what, what's plan B if Tech Dot says tough luck, no out?
Plan B for us is, um, removing one house in the middle, uh, putting a cul-de-sac at the end and creating the second entrance and exit, uh, midway on North Bowman Springs Road. So the, the center house would be, uh, gone and that would become a, uh, the second drive.
And, and I mean, just that, that still stays a feasible project with extra, you know, concrete on the ground and losing the house. I mean, I just want to make, you know, I'm not trying to pigeonhole anybody into a, a losing prospect. I just want to make sure that this is.
It, it does stay feasible and the, and the reason it stays feasible, because that's going to be the next question. The reason it stays feasible is because this is a long-term project. This is not a flip project or anything. This is something that we will be owning and managing for a long time. So over a period of years, uh, yes, it's still feasible with 15 instead of 16. We of course would prefer 16.
Right. And then I'm, I'm just assuming we have a plan B in our performance agreement on if we have to lose a lot since the number was fixed. I don't know. No, we have to go back to the, the drawing board on that agreement?
That's, that's not addressed in the agreement.
Okay.
So another thing, since I'm talking, another thing that's not addressed in the agreement is whether or not this park should be public. So if, if both parties want the park to be public, we need to put that in the agreement.
I think that was the intent.
Okay.
And I mean, that's a good point, Chad. I mean, if, if the council, I don't know if we'd have to go back to EDC on that, um, if there is a plan B anyway, because they've approved this agreement.
That, I'm just thinking ahead and trying to have a backup in case because I, I honestly see the state denying that. Since it's so close to that intersection, really, I, when I was a planner at Grand Prairie, that was an easy no-look stand the mile. So I really am anticipating that getting rejected. That's just my two cents in the big bucket, but I, I really see that getting rejected.
All right. Gary?
Three questions for three different people. First one would be to Joel. Joel, the back parking lot or the back driveway, you have it two lanes, you know, one going one way, one coming out, I guess. What is the width of that?
The, uh, yeah, the width of that back, uh, now there's a fence and there's some grass and there's some trees. The width of the concrete itself is 24 feet.
24 feet. That would be the driving, that, that would be for one car going one way and another car going another way, correct? 24 feet?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Now, next question is to the fire chief, Chief Brown. What if we had a fire there? What if we had a structural fire there? How would you attack that from the front or from the rear? And if it's from the rear, would 24 feet be sufficient? And then what if we didn't get the exit onto the parkway? What kind of problem would that cause?
24 feet meets our fire lane requirement. So, uh, that's, uh, plenty wide there. So looking at the depth of these particular lots, uh, quite honestly, we'd probably pull water from the front and fight fire off of Bowman Springs because the, these lots are only 100 foot. So, uh, it's not very deep.
Okay.
Access, access is very easy for us from that form.
Okay. Thank you. My last question was going to be to Melissa about the exit on the parkway. That's going to be my biggest concern because I, I love the, the way you're in and the way it's out. If we had the exit to the parkway, where are we at? Have we talked to anybody from Tech Dot? Is there any, uh, is there any, uh, conversation with Tech Dot about the possibility of this, a yes or a no?
They don't do that. They won't have a conversation with you. You have to actually apply. And so we've given, uh, Mr. Beal the information to apply. It's a process that takes a few months. Um, you know, our hope is that because it is, like I said before, a right turn only. Um, you know, there's no crossing over. There's no turning left on the parkway. It is a one-way out, right turn only, that they will approve it. If they don't, of course, we'll have to look at a, at a plan B.
But even just as an exit only would be, uh, that would be a, uh, true positive. But not having an exit there, I mean, it could.
There's exits all the time near intersections. You know, if you've been to a Starbucks on the corner, there's an exit. It's, you know, right only kind of thing. So I've certainly seen many of them. Um, you know, whether it gets approved, I don't know. It takes a few months to go through that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Have we, have we thought about reaching out to Cog and talking to somebody like Michael Morris and get his opinion on whether or not that would be approved? He would probably have the, uh, the general idea of whether it wasn't or not. He's sort of the guru of all that sort of stuff. Or do we just go ahead and approve it and then hope that you get it done?
Uh, I haven't reached out to Mr. Morris. Um, you know, we've worked with Tech Dot before. Larry can probably speak to this, but you know, we've tried before to get some indication from Tech Dot when we're in the planning process. And they just don't, they're just like, you need to apply.
Linda, do you have some questions?
Yeah, I have the same concerns with Tech Dot denial, but also I was hoping that staff could also explain a little bit about the, uh, the updated staff report that we've received. That might answer some questions for citizens.
Well, essentially, um, we accidentally put an older draft of, uh, our staff report that, uh, worked off of an older draft of, uh, the agreement. Uh, in this agreement, the, um, developer would be purchasing the property from the EDC directly at the TAD valued, um, valuation, which, uh, I don't have in front of me, 116,000 and something. And, uh, they would then hopefully proceed on building the project. Once the slabs are built, then the, of course, the incentive for them, well, the incentive for them is to build a project to make the money that they want to make, of course, but, um, the incentive for them to put the slabs in or get to that point is that they will at that point be reimbursed by the EDC for the, uh, purchase price minus $5,000.
Thank you.
Josh?
Yeah, two quick, well, just a statement and a question for the developer, but I'm on the same census as everybody with the Tech Dot. I mean, we've been burnt by them before, so I hate to get burned on this project as well. As far as the project itself, I love the fact that they've been scooted up. Where I work, a lot of the new developments, townhomes condos, that's kind of the it thing is to park in the rear and be up front. So I like that, uh, that was changed. Um, my other question is for Joel. I was wondering if he's ever done radio. Cause his voice is perfect for radio.
No, I, I have a hard enough time holding this job down. I can't afford to do too.
All right. That's all I got.
All right. Then, um, I'll entertain a motion and consider approval of performance agreement contract sale related to the property at 600 West Kennedale Parkway and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement. See, maybe we want to make a motion.
I would make a motion that we table this and try to get further information on that exit or that other, uh, road coming out on the, to the parkway. Uh, I'm, I'm, I just don't think I can vote for this, to be honest with you. I'm not totally against it, but there's still some questions I think need to be answered. So I would make a motion to table it.
Before, before we postpone it, uh, let's bring back this idea that, um, first off, how much information can we get? If we don't make an application?
In other, in other words, you said you knew somebody that we might be able to just call and talk to, right? Has Joel done that? Has he talked to anybody about this at all?
Well, I'd ask George if, if we would, might reach out to Michael Morris and, and all he would be able to do is give us an opinion.
Okay.
Mayor, I, I think clearly we could reach out to Michael, however, having said that, I don't know that Michael makes a practice of, he obviously works in 17 counties and making as this kind of a detailed traffic opinion on every project that came along. So I, we could ask him and he might respond to it. I don't know that it wouldn't take a while to get a response because he, he'd want to look at the whole project and the kind of detail that we have already. My suggestion to council is and recommendation is that you approve this project, recognizing that with, just like any other project, that kind of detail is going to have to be worked out through the planning process and with the, all of the agencies and entities that are involved in it. And I, I don't know that asking Michael Morris would answer the question definitively anyway. Uh, he doesn't get to make the call for Tech Dot and we've got a relationship through our engineering firms with people. I think it'd be better if we approached District Two or somebody in District Two with Tech Dot and see if we could get an opinion from them if you want to delay it. Uh, my recommendation to you is that you not delay it for that reason, but that's.
Worst-case scenario is you have 15 homes. And so, I mean, you could approve it with a caveat that there could be 15 rather than 16. That's really the worst-case scenario is, um, that there'd be 15 homes instead of 16 homes.
Quick question. Gary, did you make a motion or did you just suggest that we have a motion?
You suggested we, well, one, he suggested we table, which by the way, uh, there's people who don't seem to understand that. Tabling means that you're not bringing it up ever again.
Oh, okay. I said it wrong. Yeah.
You're, you're asking to, uh, to postpone. There's a difference between tabling and postponing for those in chat. Yeah. So the question then is, because if you table it, it's gone. Um, and therefore are you, are you asking to postpone until the next meeting is the question?
I think that's the way I would want to word it. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a second to postpone?
I'll second that for now.
All right.
Just saying, I don't have an answer by the next meeting.
So before we call a vote, I have some further discussion.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not, and I seconded it because I, I also support the idea that we need more information on this because I do think it kind of totally changes the outcome of this, this project. But, uh, from a selfish city standpoint, if we pass this now and we execute these contracts and this falls through, they bought the property at full price, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So at that point, it becomes a real estate transaction for a piece of property that we have been unsuccessfully selling for 12 years. Cause there's not much that's going to ever get to go here. So the options on it are quite limited unless you get some niche development, which this is, to come in here and do something. Um, like, like even if you're looking at the businesses next to it and they want to build a drive out, well, that doesn't do anything positive for the property. It doesn't raise the value of the property. It just puts a driveway. If you try to put some other kind of business there, well, you're looking at a business that faces inward and has a super long parking lot to make everybody walk halfway down Bowman Springs to get to their business. The, the, the real, the reality of it is, is, you know, if this fails because Tech Dot says tough and our guys have to go back to the drawing board, well, at least we made a full sale transaction on a piece of property. And it's back on the tax roll. Now at least it's on the tax roll and we're not the ones who keep, at least doing something. That's my two cents and that's where I start. So, all right.
All right. So, uh, Josh, any questions? No?
No.
Linda?
No, thank you.
All right. Well, then I have a motion before to postpone, uh, until that, are you suggesting the next meeting, Gary?
Yes, sir.
Uh, now Melissa says she doesn't think she'll have it by the next meeting, so we may need to postpone again. So we got to be prepared for that, but that'd be the soonest. Okay. So Leslie, would you call the vote on the motion to postpone?
Josh Alton?
No.
Okay. Gary Mitchell? Linda Rhodes? And Mayor Proton Wando?
So the vote fails three, two, one. Now, I entertain a motion to get, uh, again, on the item itself, uh, consider approval of performance agreement contract sales regarding to the property 600 West Kennedale Parkway and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I'm going to make a motion to approve performance agreement and contract of sale related to the property located at 600 West Kennedale Parkway and authorize city manager to execute the agreement.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Then Leslie, would you please call the roll?
Josh Alton? Gary Mitchell?
No.
Linda Rhodes?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wando?
Yes.
Motion passes three to one. All right. Item number two is consider approval of performance agreement and contract of sale related to the property located at 6820 Oak Crest Drive and authorize city manager to execute agreements. Again, um, uh, for those who are wishing to speak and a judge wants to speak, we'll go through the same process. We get a staff, uh, report and then, um, the developer report and then go to your questions and then let them come back to answer your questions. Okay. So I think this is Melissa and I think we have guests.
Yes. So, um, I'm just going to, yeah, I'd like if we could, that group to present, this is actually, um, the Housing Channel, but it's the University of Texas at Arlington that will present the, um, proposed plan. I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong area here. Proposed plan for this site, but I wanted to touch a little bit on, uh, where this is and, uh, generally what we're looking at for this area. Um, sorry, I need to get rid of the zoning map. So this is, um, in Oak Crest. It's on a corner here, as you can see. Uh, here's a lot right here. Here's a lot right here, if you can see my mouse. It is a lot that the EDC has owned for quite a few years, bought it on the courthouse steps. And it is one I've been looking after last year or so in terms of what could be done. It is a pretty challenging site. As you can see, it is adjacent to some pretty heavy industrial uses all along Oak Crest. This is an area, of course, that was annexed many years ago. And all of these uses are grandfathered. So it does create a challenge in how we built this lot. It is in a pretty challenging location next to these industrial uses. However, we reached out and met with the Housing Channel and they began to work with the University of Texas at Arlington to propose a development here that is a, it is a unique development. And I'll let them present that. But I did want to talk to you about the opportunity that exists in general in this, in this sort of immediate area. This development, I think, could serve as a catalyst to help improve what is a very challenging area. So this property is owned by the EDC. We also have some other publicly owned properties. This one sixty eight thirteen, which is owned by the city. And then this property, which is currently leased to this developer, is also owned by the city. Additionally, these two properties are vacant as well. So you have three vacant properties across the street. These two are vacant and owned by the same owner. I think there's a potential that those could develop if if there was a development that was put in at this location. But also recently, these two properties, sixty eight twenty five, sixty eight twenty four recently went up for sale and we've, we always hear about properties that come up for sale because we start getting calls. And so all of these properties, as you can see, are zoned residential with the exception of this one, the city owns, which is zone C two. So there is an opportunity where we have, you have on your agenda to look at a potential rezoning to neighborhood village for this site. And so the reason that we came up with that is opportunity to create a mix of uses here that are a very positive type of development with the potential of these two for sale, these vacant properties, the fact that this one is owned by the city. So I just wanted to put this in context in terms of what we're looking at on this site. If Joshua, I think, is here, his group is ready to present.
Yeah. Thank you, Melissa. I want to thank the City of Kennedale for this opportunity that we have to meet with you all and discuss this property. My name is Josh Nathan. I'm an associate professor of architecture at UTA. And I'm one of the faculty that helps run our, our design build program known as parallel construction. My teaching partner Brad McCorkle is in the meeting as well. And just to give you a little bit of a insight into what we are and who we are and what we do. We are a, a group that teaches courses where students spend the fall semester designing a project and the spring semester building a project. And we've worked for the last several years in the city of Arlington, near campus and east of campus to build some housing solutions for some of the parts of the city of Arlington that the city is trying to focus on. We've been doing this over the last three or four years with the Housing Channel, a nonprofit based in Tarrant County that tries to help people and residents develop wealth through homeownership. And so the idea is that we deliver low cost housing that is high quality in a way where we use volunteer labor and the, the pedagogy curriculum of the school as well as grant funding to fund and to accomplish these projects. And we're really excited to partner with Kennedale and with the Housing Channel this year to not do a single family home, but to propose this small village specifically geared toward providing retirement housing. So the goal of this is to provide a couple of, or to, pardon me, to build a couple of small homes, just over five hundred square feet as a retirement village for those that are still able bodied and willing and able to live on their own, where they can live in a small community at an affordable rate and enjoy the, the community that they have together. Our goal long term is to continue to do such projects. We'd be very willing and happy to partner with Kennedale. We also recognize that the Dallas Fort Worth area is at a severe lack of housing in certain sectors. And one of those is housing for our retired community. And so we are hoping that this project not only delivers a great opportunity for Kennedale, but inspires other cities, quite frankly, like Arlington, that are not on board yet with providing affordable, long-term housing solutions for our retirees. So we hope that this is a catalyst, as Melissa said, and starts to, to build some great things. I'm going to turn the time over to a couple of students from the class that have a presentation of what the project is that again was designed in the fall and we want to start building as soon as we can. And then afterward, we are more than willing to answer any questions that you may have. So again, thank you so much for your time today. I think it's Marcos and Rebecca.
Hi, I'm Marcos Crane. I'm one of the students with this class and I will be sharing my screen in a moment. So can you all see this? Okay. So once again, I'm Marcos Crane. I'm speaking on behalf of my class with another classmate who will be talking in this presentation as well. We're here to present our proposal for Oak Crest Meadow, a small retirement housing community. Trying to rethink plot development and redevelop this kind of, these plots, this kind of development aimed towards a small retirement community of these six plots or these six units, which we will go into detail on. So for those unfamiliar with the site, which was just shown briefly, it's in this part of Kennedale. Again, it's in this residential area with some small or with some large industrial just to south of it. But this is a plot itself. It's a vacant lot right now with a few small trees in the front and the back. Whoopsie. And then some trees along the fence on either side. So right now it's barren. There's a slight gray change throughout. And then this is our proposal for how we can redo the site and create a small scale retirement community. So this project is a set of six units spread throughout this plot with a continuous walkway, green space and public community space created down the center. Kind of creating a corridor through the middle of the project, terminating into big green space and public gathering in the back with some front loaded parking in the front. But along that main corridor being the main focus of the project, this walkway throughout and the moments it creates, interacting with the units and interacting with the site itself. So the site, we're dealing with the different setbacks and that's where these units were placed in the middle of the project with parking in the front to limit concrete, if we had the parking elsewhere, to limit this vast swaths of concrete and use throughout the site. We put it in the front and we used a, are proposing to use a paver system that allows us to put green space and crushed granite instead of concrete itself. Again, to limit the amount of concrete across the site, but really condensing in the front and open up the entire site to green space, units and public space. So the project is broken up into these four priorities. The first one we mentioned before was this paver, this rubber paper system that allows us to have parking in the front, but open up the sites of the green space throughout the entire project and really limit as much concrete as we can just to have the most natural materials in the site. The main focus is again, this core walkway with a single concrete path of eighty eight walkability throughout the site, but also these moments of crushed granite and grass able to be traversed throughout the entire project and then terminated in this big green space and public gathering space in the back, as well as smaller moments of public space throughout the project in between the units themselves. So again, this is the diagram of that main concrete walkway for ADA, but in these different moments of space breaking off and becoming more and more private as you progress into the private spaces of the project. Here's a section to kind of show that again, the main central walkway with the units flanking. But then again, in the other direction, these units create these pockets of space to create public moments throughout the entire project for the retired community who live here. Here are some renderings to show what we mean by that. So you can see this main walkway cutting through the project. And then you can kind of see these moments of public space branching off left and right between the units themselves. But overall, keeping the central corridor walkable, easy for wheelchairs or for anybody in the site, again, for self sustaining retired people who live and have their own lives and drive and walk to and from and go shopping. So making this a community aimed for these kinds of residents. Here are these moments of public spaces. There are small green spaces. There are large open favorite locations. But keeping these, these four primary locations open for any program, they can come in and put up swings here or they can have a small garden here or they can use this space for seating or this space for seating, but really leave it open to the residents to create their own space and to create their own public moments across the project instead of us coming in and saying, oh, this is a paved landscape for seating. This is for this. This is for that. I'm really trying to keep it open, especially in the back where it's just open green space and gardening for the residents to make their own, basically. And then again, using more natural plants selected to be low maintenance, low water, but also native to the site and native to Texas to keep that connection to what's going on in this plot. And then some renderings of that large public space in the back with a low line wall to, instead of cutting off the project from the rest of the site. And then these, again, these moments of public spaces of small green space or large seating, a moment to be alone or be with groups and different seating along the walkway throughout the whole project being the main focus of the overall. And some more renderings of the front loaded parking, that plastic paver system to allow green space and crushed granite instead of a slab of concrete across the whole front. But again, the one walkway of concrete to allow for compatibility and for wheelchair use along the entire overall walkable site. And then now Rebecca will be talking a little bit more about the unit itself.
Hi, I'm Rebecca and I will be talking about the unit itself. And so this is our unit, which is approximately five hundred and fifty square feet. And so the organization of the unit is laid out so that it reinforces the concept of the semi-private condition that is carried on throughout the project. And by that, we incorporated this entry foyer that separates the entry from the circulating quarter to just kind of privatize the entry. And from there, the unit itself is laid out into a quadrant where you have your kitchen slash dining room area and then your living room space, which is separated with a bookshelf that leads into your bedroom. And then finally, it leads into your bathroom. So it creates this hierarchy of publicness that goes into privateness. So here you can see the variance in ceiling height where it divides in the unit in half. On one side, you have the higher ceiling with accommodates the more public spaces, which would be the kitchen and the living room spaces. And then on the lower ceilings, it would have your bathroom and the bedroom area. On that side, you can see where the skylight comes into the, where it would be the shower to allow light into that area. And then here you can also see how the wall divides the two spaces, but it also acts as the wet wall that divides the kitchen and the bathroom. So here you can see more of the breakdown of the materials that we incorporated into the unit. For the exterior, we focus more on the roof shingles and the exterior walls are hardy vertical siding with one, with the front facade being of an accent brick, which all the units would have a different type of brick just to add a level of uniqueness to each unit. For the interior, we focus more on just incorporating decorative tile in the bathroom and then white cabin, cabin tree in the bathroom and in the kitchen as well. And the flooring to just be wood flooring, but then you can also see the data on condition that we incorporated. That includes the kitchen and bathroom for the wet wall and then the bookshelf that separates the bedroom and the living room. So we, there is a, so we are doing two versions of the unit for our regular and to our ADA. The two ADA units are closer to parking as well as they have counters that have space for wheelchair access underneath. So here are a few renderings of the interior of the house. On the first image, you can see that foyer that we established where you can see the variance in ceiling height. So from the moment that you come in, the ceiling is a bit lower. And then as you enter the unit, it creates a larger feeling so that you don't feel so enclosed in just the five hundred forty square feet that we do have. On the bottom image, you can see the view from the living room into the kitchen and into the foyer. Where you can have the seating to view out into the rest of the units. And then on the other side, the kitchen. Here you have the bookshelf that you can see the two differences in the kitchens. Okay. So here you can see the bookshelf that divides the living room and the bedroom space. And then on the upper right, you can see the bedroom and through those barn doors, you have one side that separates the washer and dryer. And through the other door, it goes into your bathroom space. And then on the bottom, you can see where the skylight focuses down on the shower and then you do have a rolling shower. And then here a few more images of the exterior of the units where you can see the vertical sightings, the front facade that has the brick on it and then sort of how they tie in into the community spaces as well.
And Marcos, could you show the dimension site plan for just a second? I want to point out one detail.
I'll put that back up.
Thank you. One thing, I know we, we have representation from the fire department here and some questions were brought up with the last project. One detail that we'd like to point out is if you look at this site plan, one thing that we've worked through iteratively is we've talked about different design strategies is keeping the houses, the houses as densely packed in the middle. It's only about point four acres, the entire size of the site. And so that is why we designate the front is parking. We come up to that front setback, as you can see in that line, and then all of the housing is accomplished before you reach a hundred and fifty feet back into the site. And so we, we recognize that this allows the fire department to get to these for emergency response and can actually aid if anything were to happen toward the back of the site. But one of the benefits of that is it really allows this community garden and the shared space in the back between the houses and then the easement to the railway, which is actually a really, really lovely part of the site. And thank you so much for your time. Anything, we, we're happy to answer any questions that we may have.
All right. So we stopped sharing the screen here. Open the public hearing and I think Joe Palmer requested to speak so far. Joe, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joe Palmer, Kennedy Alliance of Business Owners. First, I'd like to express compliment to Professor Nathan and Marcos and Rebecca for outstanding presentation. I'm ready to move into one. I do have some questions, but outstanding presentation. And seriously, I think you have a bright future ahead as an architect, both of you. Oscar Wilde once said that the critic is somebody who understands the cost of everything, but the benefit or the value of nothing. But unfortunately, in local government, there's somebody a lot more dangerous than a critic, and that is the dreamer. That's somebody who understands the benefit of everything, but understands nothing of the cost. Again, we're dealing with the giving away of property. We're sort of going in the wrong direction here. Five thousand dollars on the last one, ten dollars for this one. And I heard the city manager once again speculate. I really don't like to hear the city manager spec, the city planner speculate on something of this magnitude. She says, I think there is a possibility that the three vacant properties across the street would somehow be, the property owner would see the light and do something heroic and majestic and beneficial with this property after looking across the street and seeing these. I have to argue to you that that's really not the role of a city when it comes to being a responsible custodian of the taxpayers' money and the taxpayers' land. I, I learned something new at all of these meetings. I now understand that the EDC goes to the courthouse and does snaps up property that people have to sell or that's foreclosed on because people can't pay the property taxes in a lot of cases. So that's interesting to know. If you look at that area, I want to highlight a few things. There's a railroad track behind the property. Very loud railroad traffic going through there. It's also next to several junkyards, several salvage yards, junkyards and also trucking companies. Then I think there's also a mechanic shop over there that works on medium and heavy duty trucks. So you're going to have heavy duty trucks going through there. I would encourage members of council to look long term at this area. I think it's going to be a beautiful area once those businesses slowly but surely go out of there. Auto salvage really isn't as profitable, profitable as it used to be. But again, giving property away at ten dollars. If the homes are never built, there's a reverter clause. I don't find that in the contract. I see that in the staff report, but I don't find that in the contract. If it isn't the contract, what's the deadline? Are they bound to provide the housing to seniors or can they change their mind? Or if the entity changes hands, can that new entity offer the property to somebody else? The other thing is the parking spaces, there was a green space between the parking spaces and the, and the street. That left what looked like about three to four. That left what looked like about three to four feet behind the parking spaces in which a vehicle could back out of a parking space or get in three or four feet. And then there's a brick wall there or a hedge. I'm sure it's, there's some explanation there, but a lot of questions, you know, we can postpone this, we can get some more, more answers. Who selects the candidates for the housing? Are these going to be made available first to seniors who live in Kennedale, who've lived here their whole life? Perhaps they can't afford their home anymore because their property taxes are too high? Or does the nonprofit have the discretion on who they bring in to live there? Either case, I think it's noble, but I've got to tell you that you've already got senior housing in Kennedale. It's not the place for a city or a county or any taxing entity to go into business and compete against the private sector. Needs are met by the private sector. You need pub, you need public housing, you need housing, you need senior housing. Somebody's going to step up and build. $0 for this property, $10 for this property. Again, who decided that amount? Did council have any input into that amount that you just, you're deciding to sell this property for?
All right, thank you, Joe. Response from, wait, I got, wait, I've got some other people here. Andrew, I believe Andrew Makowski asked some questions.
Can I conclude? May I conclude?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the builder, the nonprofit entity is not bound to adhere to these, these designs that were shown to us during this presentation. Is that correct? It would be nice if they were, but there's nothing that's binding the nonprofit to adhere to those designs. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Andrew.
So I had a quick question on the rendering that you showed of the parking lot. It looked as if there were, kind of where the, the lines for the park, parking for the cars would be, it looked as if that was raised. I didn't know if that's actually a raised area, if that's just how it looks in the rendering. The other question that I had is kind of on, kind of, kind of going with where, where Joe is going, but how, what's the selling price or how are, how is it going to be determined? Who, who lives here and how are you going for that's going to happen? And for a, and what price are you looking to sell these for?
All right, is there any, wait, before we get going, is there any other questions from the public that I have to, to address here? All right, not hearing me, I will close the public hearing. I'll let Melissa and then Joshua answer those questions. Either way, you want to go first?
Sure, there were quite a few. I don't think I caught all of the questions in total, but I'll let Donna speak. She's here from Housing Channel to how they lease these out. These are affordable homes for seniors. They have to meet certain requirements, but she can speak more specifically to that. And the UTA group can speak to the parking question. And these are affordable homes. It is, this is a project that's being recommended by the EDC as an affordable housing project. This is something that is allowed by law for EDCs to take on. And it's very common for cities to take on initiatives to bring affordable housing, quality affordable housing to cities. You know, the question about cities planning or should cities shouldn't be dreaming or planning, we have a planning department and our role is to plan. We have a comprehensive plan that helps us determine the, how we develop in the city and take initiatives to help create that quality development. So I'll, I guess defer to the other, the other, the rest of the team to answer the other questions.
But before we get too far there, Drew, can we legally say, okay, only Kennedale residents can apply to this first? Or does it have to be open to the general public?
I think it would be preferable if it were open to the general public. Yeah.
Okay, so what does that mean when you say, I think it would be preferable? Can you clarify?
You're, you're asking me a question I haven't looked into.
Oh, okay.
That's issue number one. Issue number two is I'm going to give you legal advice on that subject. I might want to think about it and then give you advice in closed session.
Okay, thank you. That's all you need to know. All right, so back to who, who did you suggest? Oh, and by the way, I do believe we get property tax, we do get property taxes off this, that's correct, right?
That is correct. No, I was suggesting that that is correct. It is a nonprofit, but they, the property will be on the tax rolls and they'll pay property taxes. I was suggesting that Joshua and his team speak to the questions about the parking.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. Specifically to the question about if the, the lines between spots are not raised, that's, that's an element of the rendering, but they are, they would be painted just as in any other parking situation. Were there other specific questions about the parking that I missed? That was the one that I caught.
Not that I recall.
There was a question regarding the greenscape in front of the parking area.
Right.
Like is that rollover curb drive through into the parking? Or is that really, is that green space just there for visual aesthetics? Or was it actually some kind of impermeable surface that's driven over?
Yeah, it is a, it is a semi-permeable surface. So it is a combination of plantable, plastic pavers essentially that allow water penetration into the front and allow the, it's, it's hard surface, it's ADA compliant, it's, it's safe in all of those ways. But it is not a giant slab of concrete at the front. So green does grow up through that to allow that to soften that in the street edge, but that is pull in parking.
All right, well.
Just to clarify for people that don't understand that, you actually drive over that. We saw this product in Grand Prairie and use it quite a bit to give hidden fire lane access to fire trucks because it can support all that weight. It looks, it looks like green space, but it's, it's not. It's actually just drive over.
All right, well, I'm going to close the public hearing because I think we got everybody there. And then maybe, maybe be a little bit shocked because Joe Palmer and I asked the same questions just at a different time. So that brings us to any emotions on the consider the importance, we got to take a motion and then decide whether we'll have further discussion unless anybody has any questions for the staff before we move into the motion part and go into discussion. Now, all right, I'll entertain a motion on consider approval of the performance agreement and contractor sale related to property located at 6820 Oak Crest Drive and authorized city manager to execute the agreements. Any motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, but what is your motion?
Kind of pull this up so I can read it.
Oh, sorry about that.
Consider approval of performance agreement and contract of sale related to the property located at 6820 Crest Drive and authorized city manager to execute.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, all right, any further discussion? Gary, any discussion?
I would like to ask Mr. Nathan there if he has any other developments similar to this in any other towns. I noticed that the one lady said, or somebody said that we're trying to get like people in Arlington on board with things like this. Is there any other cities that you guys have done something like this and how's it working out?
That's a fantastic question. So we have over the last several years, over the last three years, we've built 1600, about 1600 square foot homes with the housing channel in the city of Arlington on the east side of Arlington. Previous to that, there were two micro homes that were done, houses about this square footage, actually a little smaller than this, but we're not put in this kind of arrangement. So not exactly, but yes, we've been working on housing from the scale of 300 to 1600 square feet for the last several years, partnering with the housing channel. Also, to clarify, we also have a builder partner that we work with. And so when things have to be licensed and bonded, obviously our students are not licensed contractors. So when it comes to plumbing and electrical, we rely on licensed professionals to do those things, which obviously have tons of experience. Beyond our experience, the housing channel has 30 years of nonprofit home building experience in Tarrant County with an impeccable record.
So if we approve this, it looks like you guys would go forward with this, that you would make this happen, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then across the street, you know, there are like two or three empty lots. Do you think at some point in time you might pursue trying to buy those lots and doing the same thing across the street?
We would, we would love to do that. Our, the way that our program goes, it's kind of one year at a time. And so our focus is on this lot, but we are always looking for more. And if we can continue this synergy and build more affordable opportunities for seniors, we would love to partner with those properties.
One last question for me on the parking part of it. I noticed you have, I think, three apartments that were ADA approved. What about the parking? Would it be ADA also? So in other words, if they had a van with a wheelchair?
Yes, sir.
Have a wider space?
Yes, sir, I didn't mean to cut you off, sorry.
No, you're good.
The front two units are ADA accessible, the back four are, they have standard counter types and all of the units will have roll in showers. So the, the bathrooms will all be accessible, the kitchens and two of them will be, and we will have two handicap spots, vannings.
All right, that was all I needed, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I was going to say a caveat to your question, Mr. Mitchell, was would we want to move forward? Our plan is with these documents to apply for a building permit and to move forward as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Linda. I had some concerns or questions, I guess you'd say, about security and safety. What about lighting? I didn't see anything in the renderings as far as outdoor lighting, especially in the back part where the green space is.
Yes, ma'am, great question. So all of the houses will have exterior floodlights that light the public space.
Okay, thank you.
Josh?
I don't have much, just one question real quick. There's like a wall that's in the front. Is there going to be a gate there that they have to walk through with a lock or anything?
No, sir, that is, it is a small wall that incorporates some planting. It is a soft divider to allow a little bit of a break between public and private. But the idea is that this house is part of the community and we have no intention of making it a gated community.
Okay, thank you.
Wall, probably three to four feet.
I want to congratulate you guys on a project that looks fantastic.
Thank you.
Actually got my degree from the School of Urban and Public Design at UTA. So nods off to you guys, you'll do a lot of great stuff. You know, I just wish there was more scale to this. That's really, you know, we struggle with community housing or senior housing in this community. There's, there's quite a significant waitlist on the senior developments that we do have. And I, I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm kind of torn about this project. I'm trying to think while I'm also talking. Two very hard things to do. But regardless of how this goes out, I just want to say, great job. This is a project that is well thought out, well designed, well presented, and it looks fantastic. That's, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. And our, our intention is to scale this and is to grow these opportunities. We fully recognize that many cities are not even close to Kennedale in providing viable, affordable housing for their seniors. And we want to make a difference in that, even if we can start small and scale from there.
All right, well, then we have a motion in a second. Leslie, would you take the? I'm sorry, Chad, Josh?
I want to ask Chad, what's your reservations on it?
My, my reservations are, I think the city can be more of a catalyst in a larger sweep here, since there is so much vacancy through here, that we should do something more grand. Thing with this project, but like with the zoning, that we should do something on a more grand scale rather than a senior lot. And I think that it would be a much stronger catalyst to the development of these areas to say, this is what we're expecting to start coming, so let's live up to that. Doing it one lot at a time in an area like this, I think, is definitely the slow play. And I'm not sure how I feel about that. That's my reservation.
Thank you. All right, so Leslie, back to you.
Josh Altam.
Yeah.
Gary Mitchell?
Yes.
Linda Rhodes? And Mayor Purson Wando?
May.
All right, so the motion passes three to one. If you don't mind, I think we'll take a five minute break here. We've been going at it for two hours and 15 minutes. Let's take five minutes and then we'll come back and talk board appointment. So let's just take a five minute break.
Yeah, watching the thing. My battery a lot faster. Yeah, I was watching on that one, which normally lasts for several hours.
You know, Kenneth, I'm waiting. What in the world is on your wall?
Are you talking to me?
No, Kenneth.
Who am I?
Yes.
That's my shot glass collection.
Okay. Couldn't tell from a distance. It's kind of, wow, that's some sort of collection.
Yeah, I've been watching shot glasses for a long time. There's like some from Dublin and stuff like that that I've been to.
Well, you should tell me when I go to Norway and places like that, I'll pick you up one.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay.
In case you're wondering what's on my desk, I've got an Alabama national champion hat 2020.
Nope, I wasn't wondering. What a shocker.
I'm gonna enjoy it while the ride lasts. Saban can't live forever.
No, he cannot. And by the way, he can't act either. Those Affleck commercials are terrible.
I was thinking he ought to get a Clio or something for those Affleck commercials. I thought they were wonderful.
All right. So we're waiting on Chad, and I think we're waiting on Linda. Now, there's Chad. There's Linda. So I think.
Everybody looking at ugly face. Every minute counts.
Well, it's important. All right. So we'll get back into session. And so we will talk about consider appointments to the BOA, Keep Kennedale Beautiful, Kennedale Economic Development Corporation, Parks and Rec Board, Planning and Zoning Board, Library Advisory Board, Utility and Infrastructure Board, Town Center Development Board, and the Tax Increment Refinancing Zone. You can see why I thought we should have a break before we do this. So I think what we'll do is we'll try to take them. I always like to take them in order of importance. So usually the most important board is in cities where planning and zoning. So you've had a chance to look at the planning and zoning. And by the way, I'd like to be able to make these appointments in slate. So if we can agree to a slate and say, we're approving this person, this person, this person for this board, instead of doing it one at a time and having 100 votes. If you've got a slate that you'd like to propose for the PNZ or whatever, or the BOA, then we'll debate the slate and then vote on the slate and see where we can go from there. It's a little bit of a time consumer instead of saying, we're voting on place one, place three, place five. So we'll start off with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm open to anybody who has a suggestion of a slate of people.
Yeah, I got a suggestion. So the people up for grabs so far is Martha DiBella, and I think she should stay. Kayla Hughes, I think she should also stay. Place five is currently vacant. I think we bring one of our alternates up, Brent Jones, put him there. Place six, we add Andrew Malkowski. And then in Brent's former alternate position, put Derek Rubin.
Who's the last one?
Derek Rubin.
Okay. Does anybody have anything that they think that would like to see separately, differently? Josh?
Yeah. Part of my thought process was if somebody was an alternate, they spent the time there, there's a vacant spot, then they should have the first choice to move to that vacant spot. And so for that, I think Brent Jones, who was an alternate, should move to the vacant spot. I think Perry Clemente should move to Billy Don Gillie's place. That would make Derek Rubin an alternate and Andrew Malkowski an alternate.
I think the only issue there, Josh, is that Perry did not apply to be on PNZ. He only applied to be on BOA. It was the only board that he marked down for. That's the question.
Well, I mean, if you want to go that route, because.
I'm just asking the question.
There's a lot of other people that we put on boards that don't necessarily ask to go to those boards. For example, I don't think Perry asked to go to this board. He was put on this board, so. There's other choices I've made and for people that might have requested to be on the Parks Board, that instead I put them on Keep Kennedale Beautiful Board or something like that, so.
It's a good point.
About two cents.
Any other suggestions?
So do you want me to go down my slate here and then we could?
Yeah. Just on PNZ, yeah.
Okay, so mine is number one's Greg Adams. Number two, Martha DiBella. Number three, Austin Deganhart. Four, Kayla Hughes. Number five, Brent Jones. Six, Perry Clemente. Seven, Mark Perkins. Eight, Derek Rubin. And nine, Andrew Malkowski.
Gary, is that, what are your thoughts?
Well, I wouldn't disagree with any of it, but there is one name on here that really stood out to me, and that's Chad McConnell, because he already served on a PNZ or some board in Burleson. I just thought he sounded really qualified. That was the only other one that I thought, but I think it's a flip of a coin. Either one of them have good suggestions on the, all the way through it, but I would just like to throw his name out there just because he's already served on a board and it was in Burleson. So just a thought.
Okay. Linda, you have any thoughts?
Yes, I too had Chad McConnell, but again, it's a flip of the coin. I think either person would serve well based on their, you know, how they interviewed. The only change, I think I was closer to what Chad had recommended. The only change is I had Brent Jones moved up from alternate to place six, simply because of the expiration dates of the terms.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Josh. I was just gonna ask Josh, Josh, have you talked to Perry? Does he want to serve on the PNZ? When I talked to him, he just talked about the BOA. He didn't talk about the PNZ, but I, I don't know. But I know he has a willingness to serve, so what, what's your thoughts? Or is it just something that you think he'd be good at?
He's still on.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
My bad. I'm just trying to be fair and, you know, I hate moving people around from board to board, and he's already on this board and.
That was the only reason I didn't move Perry up was because he I don't know if he was trying to wean himself off of this board and move to another one, or because he definitely couldn't be on both. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I think that'd be a conflict.
Well, the other thing with Andrew Malkowski, he really impressed me, and I think he'd be an outstanding fit on the PNZ, his knowledge, whenever we interviewed him. So that's why I put him on the PNZ.
I agree with you on anybody that's already on there, if they're willing to serve, that they should be moved up. I definitely agree with you on that, so. But I just didn't know. It didn't seem like he was interested in it, but I may be wrong.
Well, if we want to, if we want to move him up and then decide that it's, he doesn't want to do it, then we can certainly do that. I mean, that's true. What Josh has said is that we've tended to move alternates up.
Absolutely. I agree. Yeah.
And I agree with that. So I mean, worst-case scenario, we move him up and he goes, no, that's a bad idea.
Well, the other thing too, to be fair is, you know, just like the mayor said, you know, these, we do these important boards first because when you go back and look who submitted applications, a lot of people submitted for PNZ and BOA. That's like the number one board to be on, so. There were so many people requesting to be on the BOA that I just didn't think it was fair to move him over there.
Vice. Josh, do you want to, I think I hear the beginnings of a consensus. Do you want to try to make a motion of a slate? And then have someone second it, then we'll just do a little bit more of a debate on it, just in case we need it?
Okay, I'll make a motion for this slate that I presented with Greg Adams, Martha DiBella, Austin Deganhart, Kayla Hughes, Brent Jones, Perry Clemente, Mark Perkins, Derek Rubin, and Andrew Malkowski.
All right. So if anybody doesn't have a problem with that, I mentioned in a second.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
The only changes I would make would be to keep Perry and Brent in their respective years. So just flip them. Since Perry is out in 2021, put him back in the 2021 and keep Brett in the 2020.
Is that okay with you, Josh?
Perfectly fine, yeah.
All right. So we got that. So let's take the vote. Leslie?
Josh Alton? Gary Mitchell?
Yes.
And Linda Rhodes?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wando?
Affirmative.
Motion passes. All right. So let's go to the BOA, which I know Gary, I always call him Gary because he remembers the time when the BOA was fairly controversial.
Not me.
So I'm, I'm interested in listening to the possible slates on BOA.
Oh. I didn't do a whole slate, but it's pretty simple because we only got what, one opener? The vice chair does not wish to continue, correct? And unfortunately, I don't know any of these other people because they were all already on there and they didn't speak. So the only thing that I would add is to move them up, move the alternates up. And then I would like to see Julie Jacobson put on as an alternate. Does that make sense? So there's only, there's, there's only one opening, correct? Vice Chair Martin Young does not wish to continue?
Yeah, Martin doesn't wish to continue, but wait, didn't we have somebody else? Or was that EDC that decided not to, to serve again? George?
EDC.
EDC?
They moved out of town.
Yeah, they moved out of town. That's right. So do we, do we have enough spots for the alternates to move up? And we have a couple of alternates like Thelma. We also have Pat Vader, who's done it for 15. He's been, he's an alternate. He's been there for 15 years.
Yeah, we have space for one alternate to move up, and it would open an alternate space.
That, that's what I was trying to say, I guess. And then, and then my pick would be Julie Jacobson. She's an attorney and seems like she's extremely qualified for it, so as an alternate, yeah.
It's always good to have an attorney on that board.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I, I think my suggestion would be Chad, not Chad, because Chad's right there. Pat, Pat's the, he's got a lot of experience on the BOA. He's actually, by the way, voted against the city a couple of times on the BOA, so I think he's fairly fair-minded. So let me hear the slate again, and then we'll, we'll try to get a debate going here.
You guys would know better on which alternate to move up. I, I really want to leave that to somebody else because I don't know any of them.
I agree with you on, on Patrick moving him up since he's, I mean, either of those choices are fantastic choices to move out of an alternate position. They truly are. And I'm okay with either of them. I think I might differ in the other person as much as I like Julie. I kind of had her in mind for something else. But if you think she's a better fit for BOA, I can, I can go there too.
All right. So does anybody want to make a motion? I mean, what I'm hearing is, let me just try to sum it up in Gary and Chad, everybody else, me on here is, you move Patrick Vader up to a full member, and then you put Julie Jacobson as the alternate.
Right.
I, I would actually, I think that Thelma Kovak should be the alternate to move up. She's the one that her position's actually expiring this time and has reapplied. And when you look at the attendance record, she's in attendance a lot more than the other person. She's got 80% and they have 40%.
That's.
And then I had Myron Jones as an alternate to take her where she used to be, but I'm open to that as far as, you know, Julie, she would be, she would be a good fit probably too.
I thought mine would be, be a good fit here too. Like I said, I, I kind of thought Julie would be awesome in the EDC, so that's kind of where I'm leaning.
I don't disagree with you. It's a, it's a flip of coin, and I like Myron Jones. And I like Myron Jones as well. So either one of those here would be great. And then if we've got Julie on the EDC, that would. I just think she needs to be on some board as an alternate or something. Absolutely.
Let me look at another then. Consensus is putting Myra Jones as an alternate, moving Thelma up as the full-time member. Is there, is there a consensus there for that?
In fact, you know, I moved that we, we put the slate, and I'm just going to read the whole list of names. Adam Jaike. Number one, Jeff Navarro is number two, Kelly Rodd, number three. See, Patrick, not Patrick, Thelma. Number four, Lena is going to stick five. Jeremy Johnson stays at six. Jessica Vernachy stays at seven. And then Myron Jones take spot eight, and that leaves Patrick Vader in spot nine.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Real quick, did you mention Josh Vernash on there? I'm sorry.
No, I said Jessica.
Why did I have him on there? Lose my mind.
It's okay. I've lost my.
I guess I just saw Vernash and I immediately thought.
I think they both applied last year or something.
Well, her husband's on the library board. My bad.
All right. So. Yes?
I like that slate.
Okay. So Leslie, would you call the roll?
Josh Alton? Yes. Gary Mitchell?
Yes.
Linda Rhodes?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wando?
All right.
Mr. Mayor, not to change anything up, but just a question for the future for me. Were this Jessica Vernach, it shows 0% attendance. How do we, how do we attack that? Or how, what, why would we want to leave her on there if she's 0% attendance? I mean, has anybody talked to her? Has there been a problem? Why she hadn't made any of the meetings or?
We do have a policy. You have to make 75% of the meetings, and if you don't, you can be removed. George, you look like you were about ready to say something.
Well, I was gonna say this. She's in an alternate position.
Okay.
And I mean, I'm not, and the Board of Adjustment doesn't meet very often to begin with. So normally, we call on an alternate to come in when we know we're not gonna have a quorum, so they, they're not particularly required or expected to attend at every meeting if all of the full board might be there, so.
Okay, that answers my question. I was just wondering what the reasoning was. Okay, yeah, perfect.
Good question. All right. So let's pop over to, and I'm not dissing any boards, but let's go to the Economic Development Board. All right. So let's hear somebody that's got some ideas for economic development.
I had suggested for place one, Alex Daniels. Place two, Marcel Terry. Place three, doesn't change, Andrew. And then place four, Daryl Tippy. Place five, I had Julie Jackson, but I'm, I'm sorry, Julie Jacobson, but I, if you want to leave that as a council member position, then we'll have to move that around a little bit. And then Mark Yuri for place six and April for place seven. So I guess the first question is, do we want to have that as a council member position?
It's, you know, and I'm going to go back to Gary because Gary remembers this too. It's always been a council member position for a long time. Somebody who sort of liaisons between the council and the, and the EDC. It doesn't have to be. But we have had it.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other suggestions along those lines?
Well, I, I wanted to put Julie in here, and since Johnny Trevino moved out of town, I was gonna put Julie in his spot. Then I agree with Marcel, and I thought for Sandra's position, we put Josh in there because you've been on this board before, weren't you, Josh?
Would you say my dogs are barking?
You were on this board before, right? Because I was gonna put you in Sandra's place.
Yeah, I've been on that board. I like that board. I was unaware that Johnny Trevino left. I guess I'm out of the picture on that, so I had a different.
I didn't realize that till like a week ago.
Yeah, we're looking, Josh, that maybe you'd be the council liaison. Yeah, we're looking, Josh, that maybe you'd be the council liaison on the board. Are you good with that? Your schedule around?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I was going to put, I was going to request to be on another board, but I'd rather be on this one, to be honest with you.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's hear a slate because that we can get a motion on and discussion.
I'll move that we do Julie Jacobson, place one. Marcel Terry, place two. Andrew Schaefer stays in place three. Daryl Tippy stays in place four. Josh Altum takes place five. Mark Yuri stays in place six and April Cothart stays in place seven.
Didn't we put Marcel Terry on BOA or not?
No, I don't think we did.
Okay.
So we put Myron Jones on.
Myron Jones, yes, okay.
All right, do I, do I have a second to that slate?
I second that.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Leslie, you're up. You're the star of the show.
Josh Altum. Gary Mitchell.
Yay.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wando.
Affirmative.
All right, so that brings us to everybody's favorite board, the Parks and Recreation Board. Suggestions, slates. It's everybody's favorite board. There should be a slate already. Okay, go ahead, Josh.
I have Cory Hines new application, Jeff Navarres returning, Gary Swan returning, Jeremy Johnston returning. Bobby Goff fill the vacant spot and Joanne Huckabee alternate. So my slate is number one Cory Hines, two Jeff Navarres, three Kenneth Michaels, four Gary Swan. Five Bobby Joff, six Jeremy Johnston, seven Ann Beck, and number eight Joanne Huckabee.
All right, so anybody have something different? Or are they okay with that? Let me know.
Sounds good to me.
I second that. If that was a motion.
I'm fine with that, yes.
Josh, you want to make a motion? To what you just said?
No, man. I'll make a motion for the slate of the Parks Board to be number one Cory Hines. Two Jeff Navarres, three Kenneth Michaels, four Gary Swan. Five Bobby Goff, six Jeremy Johnston, seven Ann Beck, and number eight Joanne Huckabee.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Makes it easier when we have good people.
Yes, it does. And we had a lot of good people apply.
Absolutely.
All right, so Leslie, you're on.
Sorry, Josh Altum. And Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wando.
Affirmative.
Motion passed unanimously. Let's go to the Library Advisory Board. All right, now just a note that we were short some applicants. Robert Monday, former mayor Robert Monday and member of the Friends of the Kennedale Library. I don't know where he gets his information, called me and said that he'd be willing to serve on the library board. As a vacant, since we had, I think we had one short after we got through everything, but I'm open to slates.
I have a question. Do we require to receive an application when they reapply?
Do we require an app? Yes, we usually require an application.
Okay, because the two, like Josh and Troy, they both did not reapply, but it has a notation wishes to continue. So.
When, when we started this process, I reached out to all the expired members and kind of asked them for their intentions. And they responded that they wanted to continue, but did not submit an official application. So.
We probably should have them submit an official application if, for making everybody else do it. I think that's what Linda's point is, yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
So interested in slates.
So are we going to keep them on there? So I have a slate. I got Josh Vernash returning, Troy Brandon returning. So my slate is number one Susan. Dalrymple, I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong.
Dalrymple.
Right, Dalrymple. Josh Vernash. Troy Brandon. Robert Monday, and then I have that fifth spot vacant still.
Me too.
He's a, he applied for that.
Wait, who has? Chad, can you clarify?
Bobby Goff. He applied for that position.
I do.
We put him on one board, can he serve on another?
He can serve on another.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's not a.
Okay, yeah.
Unless Julie or Andrew are in our crowd and go, no, please give me library, which I see both their names on the screen.
See, Bobby applied for four other boards, so.
And we're, but we still got KKB to go, by the way. So I, I heard a, I heard a slate with still one vacancy unless it's Bobby Joff unless, did we put Julie, we put Julie on the EDC, right?
EDC, yes, sir.
Yeah. So you, keep this in mind, you're not in a hurry. If you want to wait to hold that last vacant position to see if you can find somebody to fill that vacant position, you can do that too.
I'm trying to nag my wife into it, so any help would be great. We need a nurse on there.
You can fill the ones that are now and then say, we'll wait until next month and then find somebody that'll fill that last slot.
All right, let's do that. We'll just leave a.
Yes.
Space blank.
All right, so somebody make that motion to, of those positions.
If I heard Josh right, it was, I moved that we put, place one stays the same, place two stays to Josh Vernachi. Place three goes to Robert Mundy, place four goes to Troy Brandon, and place five remains vacant.
Second. All right, Leslie, you're on.
Josh Altum.
Yes.
Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wando.
Affirmative.
All right, motion passed unanimously. The next board we have up here is Utility and Infrastructure Board. I had talked to George about that. I'd like to see if we could postpone that and determining on whether or not that board is still of use. Since if we were to talk to Larry Hoover, that we've already got our list of all the priorities of utility infrastructure for the next 15 years. We don't have to make an appointment, we don't have to do it today, but we could certainly do it in the next council meeting, determine is that board still a relevant board? And if it is, then make the appointments, or we can decide that board isn't as relevant as we need and may not need that board anymore. Is anybody okay with waiting a month on that board? And having that discussion?
I'm okay with waiting. Well, heck, now I don't know what to say, table, whatever, I've motioned.
Postpone.
Postpone.
Yeah.
The UIV board nominations.
All right, so I have a motion to postpone, do I have a second to postpone?
Seconds.
All right.
Ladies first.
Are we going with Linda for that second?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes.
Josh Altum. And Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wando.
Affirmative.
All right, the motion passes. And just in case you're wondering, Josh, is that tabling, they did this back with congressional times. It used to be called what they call the gag order, that any anti-slavery resolutions were immediately tabled, which meant that they were never talked about. So in parliamentary procedure, which by the way, we don't necessarily follow completely, you always want to say postpone rather than table.
Always thought table was just kind of skewed on the other side of the table till next time.
You placed it. Back to it. Okay, so that brings us to the Town Center Development District.
All right, I have a, I have an easy slate.
Did you all skip, skip or you ain't gotten to KKB yet, or did I miss that one?
No.
I'm saying KKB for last.
Okay.
Which is just an excuse that I skipped it by accident.
I think this is an easy one. I think April stays because she reapplied and I think Gary Mitchell should take over the council member position.
I agree.
Are you okay with that?
I'll try to work it in.
All right, do I have a motion then?
I moved that the slate for the TDD, the place two goes to the EDC member April Cothart. And place four is council member Gary Mitchell.
All right, second, Leslie, you're on.
Who was the second, I'm sorry.
Josh.
The guy with the mustache.
Josh Altum. Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wando.
Affirmative.
Chad, were you, were you just getting back at me, Chad? Is that what you were doing?
Yep, you're welcome.
How often does this board meet?
Once a year.
Well, oh my goodness. If I can't work that in, I got a problem.
And we haven't met this last year, so. I wonder why COVID.
The COVID. All right, so that brings us to the tax increment refinance zone, or the TERS as we like to call it.
I'm going to abstain from this one, just putting that out there since I'm on this board.
Okay, so I need somebody else to slate.
Okay, I have, for the two vacant places or, or re-up places, place two, I have Julie Jacobson. And place four, I have Mayor Proton Chad Wondell.
More revenge.
I also have that.
Got a second of that, all right. Any other discussion? Leslie, you're on.
Okay, Josh Altum.
Yay.
Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wando.
Abstain.
All right. And then, of course, that leaves the best board for last, that I did not forget, the KKB. There's Kenneth going, yep. All right, KKB. I know we had a guy that wanted to get his hands in the dirt and doesn't live in the city.
Mark Green.
That's him.
Yeah.
And I'm sure he's got a green thumb. Sorry about that.
Thought we'd change that, that the KKB people from outside could be on it.
It's more of a civic organization that we created outside of the city structure. It's part of a state organization. About Texas beautiful.
So. Here's what I got. I got Kimberly, Kimberly Courtney, she's new. Kincaid Smith Kimberly is new. Kenneth Michaels returning, Lori Saunders returning, Joanne Huckabee replacing Heather Hicks. And so the slate's number one Caesar Guerra, two Kimberly Courtney. I have three vacant for some reason. Four Kincaid Smith Kimberly, five Wilda Turner, six Kenneth Michaels, seven Linda Miller, eight Lori Sanders, Saunders. And nine Joanne Huckabee.
Any changes to that that anybody sees?
I would like to put Mark Green on this board somewhere just because, one, he is in the ETJ. And he has desperately been wanting to get involved in our city. And at some point, the ETJ is meant to become our city. And I think it's nice to have a voice down there in the donut hole. So.
Can I say one thing here?
Yeah.
Kimberly Kincaid Smith did an interview, right? I didn't, I don't remember seeing it. I actually know this person. Kimberly Kincaid Smith, she didn't interview, I know her. I don't know that she's going to be a great fit for this, but I agree with, I'm sorry.
Is she not the one that interviewed and said that we wouldn't know her by her last name?
I think that was Kimberly Courtney.
That was Kimberly Courtney.
Yeah. Yeah, that was Kimberly Courtney.
Courtney used to be Kimberly Evans.
Yes.
Yeah, she seemed like a fireball. She seemed ready to go. So yeah, yeah, she definitely needs to be on the board. So I would agree with Chad that Mark Green needs to replace Kimberly Kincaid Smith. That's just my two cents.
Okay, so give me a, give me a slate there, Gary.
Uh, where did you have? Or maybe it was Josh's. Where did you have Kimberly Kincaid Smith? What position?
He had it in four, I think, but he didn't have anybody in three. Yeah, three's still vacant, so we could still add somebody.
Oh, okay, okay. Mark Green, if we could add him there, that would be, that would probably work because he seemed real willing to get his hands dirty.
Is it Mark Green or is it James Green? For some reason I have James.
Don't we say Mr. Green?
Yeah. Okay, James Mark.
It's James Mark.
We're both right.
All right, so give me a slate, somebody that you've got. Gary?
Okay, leave Caesar Guerrero in place one. And then not reapplying in, in place two. I think, do we have Joanne Huckabee there? Is that what somebody said?
That's good.
Okay, Mark Green, place three. Place four. Guess we could do Kimberly Kincaid Smith. Place five, Wilda Turner. Place six, Kenneth Michaels. I guess that's how you say it. Place seven, Linda Miller. Place eight, Lori Sanders. And Kimberly Courtney in place nine. I didn't put her in there twice, did I?
No. I'll second.
I got a second. Any further discussion?
If we didn't think Kimberly Kincaid was going to be a good fit, did we still want to keep her on the board or just leave it vacant? Or did we want to pick somebody else?
Well, there was nobody else that applied for that.
I mean, that's true, but I don't want to put somebody on there just to set them up for failure if it's not something they want or plan on attending.
Well, we could have, sorry, Leslie, we could have Leslie call her tomorrow and she says, I decline. Then we'll put it back on the agenda for the, the February meeting.
All right, I'm, I'm agreeable that.
He didn't apply for it, correct?
Yeah, she did apply, or it's on here anyway.
She just applied for everything though, didn't she?
Kimberly, I don't.
Maybe.
Leslie, could you give her a call tomorrow saying she's willing to accept?
No, she only applied for KKB.
Right.
You know, I'll pick that back. Marcel Terry did apply, but I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong sheet here. My bad. I'll shut up.
Yeah, Josh, get your sheet together.
Kimberly Kincaid Smith only applied for this board for KKB.
That is correct. All right, we'll leave her on and we'll just call to confirm since she didn't interview. And if she gives us a negative answer, then we'll take it from there.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. So Leslie, you're up.
Josh Altum.
Yeah.
Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wando.
Affirmative.
All right. Wow, that, that may be the easiest that we've ever had doing that. So let's now go to board appointments. Consider appointment of Chair and Vice Chair for Board of Adjustments. And the Building Board of Appeals. I think right now we, we have a Chair in Jeff Navarres. I think maybe Azam might be your next more senior member to be a Vice Chair.
I agree with that. Reappoint Jeff as Chair and appoint Vice Chair as Azam.
Second.
My second.
Any further discussion? Leslie, you're up.
Josh Altum.
Yay.
Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wando.
Affirmative.
All right, motion passed unanimously. That brings us up to the Board of Appointments of Chair and Vice Chair for Planning and Zoning Commission and the United Development, Unified Development. All right, motion passing unanimously. That brings us up to the Board of Appointments of Chair and Vice Chair for Planning and Zoning Commission and the United Development, Unified Development Code, open to ideas.
Um, Martha's been a great leader in that and I think she should stay as it, so I, I'm, we reappoint her as Chair. Uh, and Kayla Hughes has been on that board for quite some time and I think she should be the Vice Chair.
I'll second. All right, do I have any further discussion with that? Uh, Leslie, you're up.
Josh Alton.
Yes.
Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wondell.
Affirmative.
Motion passage unanimously with four yeses and one affirmative. Um, next up, consider appointment of Chair of the Tax Increment Refinancing Board, the TERS Board.
And I'm gonna abstain again.
I would suggest Daryl Tippy.
Uh, as the Chair?
Yes, sorry, yes.
And he's on our, he's the EDC guy, right?
Yes.
All right, do I hear a second for that?
Second.
All right, any other further discussion? All right, I'll enter, Leslie, would you do your thing?
Josh Alton. Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wondell.
Same.
Okay.
All right, holy cow.
Mayor, this not, this might not be the place and if it's not, just tell me, but I, I have a suggestion. All right, I have a suggestion, or, or maybe it's a suggestion. The other day when I was listening to the podcast, uh, you guys had a, a brief moment where you got to just kind of round table talk. And, uh, I thought it was amazing that you guys were just bouncing things off of each other. And I don't know if this is gonna be George or you or all of us, but I would love to see to, if we could develop a time where the council and maybe the staff, or maybe it doesn't have to be the staff, but at least George, and the P and Z Chair and the BOA Chair, the EDC Chair could all sit down as a roundtable meeting and just bounce things off. In other words, we have a direction that we want to go in the city. I think we should all be on the same page.
All right, well, George, yeah, I think it does. George, can we try to set that up before the next council meeting to see if we can have sort of a council member, Board Chair meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, and just talk about general city direction.
I mean, it doesn't have to, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, ask the other, the other council members if they would like to do that. I just feel like it would be, uh, I just feel like it will be a, a, a huge advantage for us to all kind of sit down and just be able to discuss whatever's on our mind and, and bounce it off of each other.
Well, I, I'm, I'm the mayor and I'm cloaked with immense power, so I think it's a good idea, so I think.
Okay, all right, okay.
We'll just, all we'll need to make sure is that we have some sort of agenda listed.
Okay.
I, I, Drew would probably agree with me on that. It just can't be a wide-ranging discussion. Uh, it could be, uh, if you have some ideas about topics that we can list as an agenda and then have a meeting, that's not a problem.
You know, you talked a little bit about the school district and having a, a liaison between us and the school district, and I just think that's a great idea. I think that we're missing the boat on not being able to sit down and talk to them to a certain degree. I know you said you were in conversation with somebody just about every day and I think that that's a must. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, my, my, my thing is that when I talk to the School Board President, it's not so much, it's just to tell them what we're doing. This is what we're. Uh, but we can, we can invite the, you know, if we needed to, we could invite the School Board President.
I think it would be awesome. Yeah, I do.
I mean, it's John Clark and we know how argumentative he can be, but that's okay.
He's got good ideas.
All right, so that brings us up to.
Yeah.
Can we not do it before the next council meeting? I mean, give us a little bit more time to.
How about before the next March council meeting? How about that?
Am I not mistaken, don't we do this anyway, once a year, like when we did it at TCC, we all sat down, it's a two-day event and we spoke with each department?
Well, we spoke with the departments, but I think what Gary's asking, and I don't want to get too far afield before Drew cuts me off, uh, is talking with the Chairs. Usually we're talking to the Department Heads, not necessarily Martha DeBella, not necessarily, uh, Jeff Navarres or the head of the, uh, EDC.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
So would you rather have it before the March meeting, Josh?
Yeah. Um, yeah, right before the March meeting, if we can.
Is that okay with you, Gary?
Yes, sir. It don't even have to be that, it don't even have to be that quick. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there and, because I don't, I didn't even know if it's even legal, so I'm just throwing it out there to see if.
It's legal as long as we, we post it as a quorum with the council members and it's an agenda.
Okay.
All right, so let's go to public hearings, starting off with case PZ 2101, conduct public hearing considering ordinance 721 regarding a quest, a request by John Gos for rezoning of OT 4 uh, to OT 2 for approximately one acre located at 443 True Gun Road, uh, A and B and 445 True Gun, uh, Carroll Heights Edition, lots 5R, 6R and 7R, City of Canada, Tarrant County, Texas. Uh, staff report first before I call on, um.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll ask Melissa if she would present this case first and I think she's prepared to do that.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know if you finished with your sentence. Um, okay, this is, uh, property on True Gun, so it's a couple blocks off of the parkway on sort of the north, uh, end of town. Uh, here's the parkway here. Uh, it is these three lots that this, uh, one individual owns. Um, so here's the location. It's kind of an unusual location. It's, um, not very connected. The only way to get to it is from the parkway in Woodley Lane. The property is zoned Old Town 4, I think, um, perhaps about 10 years ago, the city came in and did a city initiative rezoning for the entire Old Town area. Uh, and this area is Old Town 4. Old Town 4 is the highest, uh, density, uh, most, uh, permissive in terms of commercial use. And so because it does require higher density, it actually does not allow for single-family development. Um, I understand the intent of that zoning, however, um, this particular area is a bit unique in that it is somewhat isolated. As I mentioned earlier, it's not really connected. This is the street here. It actually dead ends on both ends and only connects to the parkway, uh, with this one street. So it is zoned Old Town 4, but, um, these are all legal non-conforming uses currently because they are, um, all single-family and then you have single-family uses here on Woodley. I don't know if I'm saying that right. Woodley, 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 um, that are adjacent to this street and then you get into commercial uses, um, at the parkway. Um, then I should mention, the reason that the owner, uh, is asking to rezone these is to build or to sell to build, uh, single-family homes on these lots. Uh, and I'm gonna pull up an aerial here in a minute. Um, this is the future land use plan that calls for downtown village, which is really the whole variety of uses, so it's a pretty broad um, category in the land use plan that, um, in terms of downtown village, which allows for everything from single-family to multi-story, uh, commercial. Um, so just want to show you, all right, let me scoot over to the, that area. Um, so let's see. Sorry about that. This is the area here and this is, uh, as I mentioned, this is zoned Old Town 4, but you can see here, these are the lots that the, uh, that's, uh, on our agenda that this one owner owns. It is three separate lots. One lot has a single-family home on it already and the other two are vacant lots. Um, and then you have a home here, a home here, and then a number of about eight or so homes here. Um, and then it gets into commercial uses at the parkway. At the end of the street is a commercial use that really is only accessible from a driveway off of True Gun. Um, this we show has a, a CO for pool, uh, pool company that's using it for storage. And then behind here, you have a variety of uses, including mobile home park and various, uh, sort of wide industrial uses. Um, part, the main reason that this area is really not connected to other areas and it is kind of isolated is because of the creek, which is surrounding it, uh, essentially on three sides. Um, so the staff does recommend approval, uh, to Old Town 2, which would allow for that, um, single-family development on these lots. We feel it would be consistent with the uses that are there. Uh, basically would be down zoning that to allow that to be, uh, more consistent with the surrounding uses. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the, uh, recommendation, uh, for council, excuse me, recommended 6 to 0 for approval to council.
All right, uh, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Uh, I got Joe Palmer wishing to speak. Uh, Joe, go right ahead.
I just have one quick question. So, uh, the city planner referenced the property at the end of that dead end. It's owned by a pool company, a pool maintenance company, and they're using it for storage. What, what implications would this zoning change have on their CO? You guarantee that their CO will not be denied if this were to pass.
Melissa?
Um, it has no implications. The CO has already been issued.
But that isn't the question about what has happened in the past. I'm asking going into the future, what are the implications on their CO going into the future? If this were to pass.
Once a CO is issued, as long as they're in compliance with that CO, the CO remains.
They have to reapply.
Mayor, I, I don't think, I, I'm not sure we understand the question. Once the CO is issued, unless there's a change in use in that property, there wouldn't be a request for a new CO. So if the pool company sold the property or sold the business and wanted to use some other kind of use, there may be a need to evaluate it for a new CO, but the pool company wouldn't then be affected by that. Uh, is that correct, Melissa?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, uh, as long as the, um, owner or the, uh, whoever has the CO is in compliance with the CO, meaning the land use, uh, then the CO continues to be in effect.
But if they change the land use or they change the business, then they reply to, they reapply for a new CO based on maybe new standards the city has set for certificates of occupancy?
Yes, and you know, a new applicant would also go through inspections that, um, through the fire department and building safety.
The use that's there now is permitted. It would only be if the use were being proposed to change that the city would be inspecting and considering whether or not to issue a new CO. That's not an annual, annual process for the existing business.
Correct.
All right, uh, I'll just, uh, that answered your question, Joe.
I appreciate checking back regarding the question. I, the question essentially is, um, out of concern for that property owner's rights to use that business, use that property, uh, for the use that he or she wants to. And with zoning changes being introduced around that property, is it going to jeopardize or in any way make more difficult that property owner's ability to use that property, uh, for the, for what they want to use it for?
And the answer is no, unless they sell it and somebody wants to, to do something else with it.
All right, thank you.
And then you change it.
I appreciate that.
All right, you're welcome. All right, so any other people wanting to speak? All right, if not, then I close the public hearing. Any questions for the staff?
Question, Melissa. Um, since I don't have it pulled up in front of me for the Old Town 2, that last lot, is it gonna meet Old Town 2's lot dimensions on width for a, a single family or are we gonna be looking at possibly a future, it looks bigger on your screen than my screen. That looks wider, so I don't, I don't think my concern is.
You will not have a problem meeting the.
Okay. Just making sure we're not looking at, you know, we get into this, oh, now we got a residential replat too, but on that screen, it actually looks bigger. The lot looks wider than it looks like.
Well, also, if you have an existing lot, um, that's zoned for residential, you have a right to develop that lot as residential, even if the lot is not, um, the, you know, if it's too small or whatever, you actually have a right to develop it within the land use that's allowed.
All right, any other questions?
I do. Go ahead. You can move your mouse. I'm sitting there going, man, this thing is not moving. Um, my question's from Melissa. So in O2T, are there special requirements in the way the home's supposed to look, like the aesthetics and all that, and their restrictions and stuff like that?
There are. It, I don't have the whole code in front of me. It, in a nutshell, they're to be compatible with what's around it in terms of the older style.
Cottage kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty flexible though. Uh, there's multiple styles in there. Um, we've had, and quite a few developments i- in the Old Town area for single-family homes.
I, I don't know who Jackson is, but they wanted to speak. Is Jackson wanting to speak? All right.
I, I have a question for Melissa. Melissa, it looks like there's a structure on 445 there. Is there some type of structure? Is that a house or what is that?
Uh, this is part of the application and yes, there's a single-family home on it. So currently, all, all, everything you see in this area is all legal non-conforming.
Okay.
All properties are legally legal non-conforming, so, um, this, these three lots are currently legal non-conforming in Old Town 4, or certainly this one is, that has a structure on it anyway. Um, so this how, home within become conforming.
Okay, okay. Does the owner of the property have a willingness to continue to build or do you think he's more apt to sell it to somebody to build? It, it really doesn't matter, but just, just from my understanding, has he said?
I have been getting, I think he has it up for sale. I've been getting calls from buyers, so I'm assuming he's trying to sell it.
Okay, yeah. That gives him an incentive. I got you. Okay, good.
Any other questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion on case PZ 2101.
I move that we approve ordinance 721.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
All right, second, uh, Councilman Mitchell, any further discussion? All right, uh, Leslie, you're up.
Josh Alton. Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Wondell.
Affirmative.
All right, the motion passed unanimously. Um, that brings us up to case PZ 21 dash 02. Oh, wow, we got a soundtrack to this one.
Okay, um, so, uh, this is, we've kind of already been over this, but, um, I'll just hit on a little bit this, uh, we've been over this because of the agreements that you guys had considerate for, up for consideration earlier. Um, but this is 6820 Oak Crest Drive, uh, West, uh, property that's owned by the Economic Development Corporation. This is the location here. Um, it is, it is a vacant lot. Uh, it is surrounded by a kind of a variety of uses, but, um, generally speaking, to the north, there are single-family homes. And to the south, on the, um, to the south, south side of Oak Crest are predominantly commercial uses and on the north side are, uh, mostly residential in this area, although it turns into commercial, so it's a real mix of uses in this area. Uh, the existing zoning is R3. At some point, the city did come in and do a city initiated rezoning. I'm assuming that probably occurred when this area was, uh, annexed, um, with the idea of this, uh, becoming, remaining and becoming residential for those lots that are not currently residential. It is on the edge of the R3 zoning, as I mentioned. As you see in the red and the purple, this is commercial use, mostly salvage yards that are, um, adjacent to it. Uh, and then the future land use plan calls for this to be, um, Employment Center, which is, uh, kind of interesting. Um, Employment Center allows for a variety of uses. We have EC 1, 2 and 3. And, um, interestingly, uh, what we found through some research is, um, although we have, I apologize, this is my dog. Um, although we have EC 1, 2 and 3, um, the city didn't come. the city didn't come back in and rezone this one, two, and three. So it's all EC, which allows for a variety of uses from single family all the way to commercial and hotel. So it's really designated to be a mix of uses. Whoops. Okay, pull up my aerial here. And so just, I know we looked at this a little bit earlier, but just to kind of show you on an aerial. The reason that this is a unique development, this is, of course, you saw earlier presented by the UTA students. So it is a little bit of a unique development, but it's certainly a unique side, sort of sandwiched between some single family uses, some vacant lots and commercial. As we began to work on this development and working with them, began to really look at an opportunity to create a neighborhood village here. And NV, of course, fits, and it's really the only category that fits what the, what housing channel wants to do on this side. And, you know, we couldn't do a PD, a plan development, because that requires five acres or more. So as we began to look at what's possible, NV seemed to make a lot of sense, considering the potential for redevelopment, particularly across the street. We have several vacant lots, including sixty-eight thirteen here, which is owned by the city. Two vacant lots that are owned by an individual, the same individual. And then we have two properties here. These are zoned R three currently, but these are up for sale now. We're starting to get calls about, you know, what can be, what can happen on these lots. But what's currently happening on these lots, which is storage of large trucks and trailers, is no longer an allowed use. It's there basically is a CO, was a CO for auto parts salvage, and that is no longer the use. So the grandfathering has gone away. So this use will change. And so there is an opportunity to combine with this one and potentially down the road, even perhaps this lot, which is actually also owned by the city, to create a neighborhood village. There's a possibility that we could look at working with the property owners that are not publicly, the property that's not publicly owned, do perhaps a city initiated rezoning to NV and see if we can't begin to initiate some development in this area to really improve this entire area, not just this singular lot. So that's, staff does recommend approval and the PENZI board recommended approval six to zero last week on this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, let me open a public hearing. So Joe Palmer wishing to speak. Joe, go ahead.
Just to reiterate what I mentioned before, this is obviously related to what we've already talked about. We're looking at selling this property for ten dollars to a nonprofit entity. The question I did not hear asked was, what were the surrounding cities? What, what did they receive for the properties that they sold to the nonprofit or to other nonprofits like this? I think it's a little bit premature. Your motives are noble. You know, you want to transform the city into a place where everything is great. But, you know, reality, we got to look at math. You've got to look at money. You got to look at the direction that the city's been going in. And I see a lot of people not really paying attention. That's fine. That's sort of symptomatic of why we got here and how we got here. So I'll just keep talking. You know, you want to build these things, but is the market really demanding that there? Look at the commercial or look at the industrial that's south of there. Why not just wait a little bit and see, maybe go engage in those businesses and see how long they plan to be there? You know, if you could flip a switch and all of the industrial is gone and you could replace it with something that's perfect, that would be wonderful, but that's just not the world we live in. I don't know what the property values are going to be there. Single family is really what that looks like it needs to be. I think once those salvage yards are gone in a few years or a few decades, that you'll have a lot of nice single family homes back there. But to initiate something for the Economic Development Corporation to use taxpayer money to buy more property and, you know, be, be planners and be somebody to create things and take the place of the market, just don't think you have a very good track record to base your, your chances of success on. I mean, can you present anything that you've done in this city or cities that you've come from in the past, members of staff, that's, that's been a success? You know, I'd be open to look at it, but again, ten dollars for a piece of property, when the people, the taxpayers in the city are suffering, they're going to have to bear the burden for that. You're going to have to answer for that. When they say, why are my property taxes going up? You're going to have to answer for why you sold a piece of property for ten dollars to a nonprofit that's not going to pay any taxes. They're not going to pay any property taxes. And they're not bound to build the thing according to the design we saw. So, you know, I would encourage city council to make a decision based on logic and not emotion and not feel good. We want to do stuff and team up with UTA, and that's wonderful. Great kids, bright kids. And we want to help seniors, but guess what? The market's doing that. It's not your place. Your place is to provide for roads, provide for public safety to some extent, buyer, police. But, you know, you're outside of the bounds here. Thank you for your time.
All right. Unless, I'm not sure if there was a specific question there, except other than checking what other places are charged.
I, no, we, I haven't done an analysis like that.
All right. Did anybody else want to speak at the public hearing? No? All right, then I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion on case PZ twenty-one oh two, ordinance seven twenty-two.
I want your motion to pass ordinance seven twenty-two regarding a request by Economic Development Corporation for rezoning from R three residential to neighborhood village.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion passed. I mean, we have a motion in a second. All right, further discussion?
Yeah. I'm having a tough time with this one for a couple reasons. Because it seems a little dartboardish to me. And like I told them, they have a great plan. They have a great product. They have a great idea, great concept, well thought out. However, I think, and again, this is just my two cents in the drop of a big bucket. I have to disagree that retail might, or residential might be where this is headed when we start looking at five years from now. And the pressure that having an open frontage way, easier access to our city brings to this area, I think we're going to see a heavy commercial retail pressure that's going to start pushing that on us. I think personally, I would like to see us kind of take this whole front area and kind of do an analysis of, we know it's supposed to be an employment center and mix of uses, but let's look at what reality is going to bring with an entirely new freeway infrastructure project. How does this change the scope of this property? And are we still looking at the same, you know, future of this and how it looks? I think there's some, some need for that before we, you know, rezone this lot, rezone that lot. And, and again, there's so much vacant property in this area that's dotted with a single family that I, I think the city could do a better catalyst on its own for a better use of rezoning, once we figure out what that should be, and start rezoning towards that ID, that idea. That's, that's my two cents and I'll do my time.
All right, any other discussion?
Well, didn't they just redo all the streets down there and they're like residential streets?
Most of the lots in that area, certainly to the north and east of this lot are existing single family residential. And I guess you're referring to Link Street, which is relatively new.
I seriously see the, the pressure for redevelopment down there being so great in five or six years that you're going to see some of these streets just get bulldozed up and redone. That even the streets themselves are going to be removed to build bigger commercial lots for larger, bigger produces. That's honestly what I see happening. Everywhere I've seen a new highway project like this happen, look at one sixty-one and I twenty. That exploded. You have everything that Grand Prairie just did around that. You look at all the other stuff that's around those areas where they just did all these big highway projects, and the pressure for larger scale development has come right behind it. So I'm worried that if we try to go into this area and one lot it at a time, we're going to make a dartboard we can't come back from.
If this developer comes in, even if we don't change it to neighborhood village, they can still build there, correct?
No. It's zoned R three.
And that's why I'm doing, like I said, it's a great project. It really is. But I just don't know if this is the right time and the right place.
Yeah, I think my counter to that would be Chad is that we can cite those, those road projects, but clearly, as you all know, it's more than the road projects. It's what the demographics look like, five, six miles around in that circle. And we still have that problem too. I mean, those, I mean, like you said, it's a complicated issue, certainly.
And I would argue that the reason we don't have the continuation of what's going on to our neighbor to the east or to the west is because we have a creek and poor access. If that creek had access across it with better access to our side, I strongly feel our side of the highway would look exactly like for still. You would have more retail development there because of better access. And that's what's about to happen is better access. And that will spur that commercial development, because that's the location, location, location. If it's hard to get to, they won't go. And soon it's not going to be hard to get to. That's just.
Zoned R three now. NV is definitely an improvement. I mean, what you're saying, you don't want it to be all houses down in there.
Right, but at the same time, is one lot the spirit of a neighborhood village? And I understand you got to start somewhere, but in the scope of, this is supposed to have mixed uses. Somebody's done one lot, neighborhood village, without any plans for future actual rezoning around it, then this doesn't meet neighborhood village by having mixed uses. I mean, I understand that it can be one use. It doesn't have to be a fully mixed use, but at this point, you're basically talking townhomes.
Yeah, I also think though, you're still taking a guess because we're making an estimate. And one thing we know about futurists is that futurists are wrong ninety-nine percent of the time. They're like psychics.
All right, well, show me, show me one highway interchange that was built that didn't have commercial development go around it.
Yeah, but there's a difference because it's not just the interchange, right? Because when we put in some places that have green spaces, that's one thing, right? Obviously. Read, I mean, when you look down two eighty-seven, when you had the green spaces, when you look down the Chisholm Trail Parkway where you had green spaces, when you expanded the thirty-five W area heading north toward Alliance, you had green spaces. I'm not saying that you're wrong, but I'm saying it's also a lot more complicated in terms of redevelopment as it is opposed to just saying, we're going to build a highway and we're going to get better. So that's.
I recall playing out in Grand Prairie at one, at one sixty-one and I twenty. The whole south into town, that whole area had houses on it, and they bought up every single one of those homes. And they weren't mobile homes. They bought every one of them and rebuilt the entire area.
Well, I guess I, I can give you plenty of examples of them when they're building interstates, but usually in green spaces. But of course, it doesn't really negate that it's possible what you're saying too. It doesn't negate that that could happen. I mean, we're all looking at our crystal ball, right?
And I agree with that, but I don't, I don't think green space in a place where you've already got activities is going to happen. I mean, what would be the use there to buy up property just to turn it over to green space?
Well, I'm not saying, when I say green spaces, I'm not talking about when you're looking at the, the Kendall Parkway and they go, why is Mansfield doing what they did? Well, Mansfield had open fields, green spaces. Kendall, redevelopment means brownfields, right? In many cases, that you're going to have to go in there and, one, put parcels of lands together and have to deal with brownfield development, which makes the redevelopment in Kendall a little bit more difficult than having open fields, as you saw down two eighty-seven. I mean, when you look just at Sublet and two eighty-seven, where the Kroger and everything else was, right? What was there beforehand?
Fields. And I, and I agree.
Yeah.
But if you look at a brand new highway they got built, where they put an intersection of one sixty-one, joined it to I twenty, brought it through there, they redeveloped all of that neighborhood that was down there. They redeveloped all of that small commercial and the heavier commercial. It spurred off, that's what spurred off Walmart and all them wanting to be down there was they knew that one sixty-one was about to be completed. You got.
And I'm just saying, I'm saying there's not a hard and fast rule there, Josh. That's a Chad rather. That's all I'm saying is that can, it may not, it can.
I'm saying in the scope of things, we're looking at a very tunnel vision view of what could be without looking at a scope of what we should be doing.
May, maybe, yeah.
And that, that, that's really the biggest reason I'm kind of not for this is I think we're looking at this one little piece and we're ignoring the rest of the, the playing field here going, is this the future of what we see here? And if it is, why don't we do something better? You have an applicant for this one lot, but.
Isn't the point of the comp plan to be that future when you look at the future of the comp plan and you're, and you put pieces together?
In, in, in most of it, yeah, but I don't know if this is the right path.
And that's a fair, that's a fair, I think that's a fair point. If you're not sure it's the right path, then you know.
And that's, then that's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't have any problem with their, their project. I just don't know if this is the right place with what's, what the future in a very short term future.
All right, so any other questions? I think Chad and I have been having fun here, so. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Wait, is Josh going to say something? Is he moving closer to say something? No, okay. Leslie, would you call the roll?
Josh Altam. Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
No.
And Mayor Pro Tem Wando.
No.
Then I will vote yea. There's a tiebreaker.
Win some, lose some. That's how it works.
Well, I'll wrestle for the next one, Chad.
He doesn't, I don't take any of this personal. I mean, that's the whole. So I appreciate everybody's input. I mean, it's great.
Yeah, it's great. I mean, I guess I can sit around and talk about this stuff all day long. It's too much fun. All right, so now. So the next one is the easiest, easiest one. I need a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
Any opposition? No, then we're adjourned. And by the way, thank you, everybody, for continuing to meet by, by my, my Zoom. We, you know, yesterday we had forty COVID deaths in Tarrant County and three thousand new cases. And like I said before, Texas is having three hundred deaths a day now from COVID. So we've got to be careful. Get in line, get your shots. I've got my distemper and rabies. I just need to get my COVID. So we're adjourned. Thank you all for all your hard work. It's appreciated.